All right. Good evening, everyone. Happy September 7th. I can't believe Labor Day weekend is over. We are here. It's good to see all your faces. We have a long night tonight, hopefully not too long, but eager to get going. So we will open our meeting with a roll call vote.
Corey Evans here.
Jeanne Haley did bold here.
Diane Kennedy here.
Carrie Thompson here and just an FYI, tonight's meeting will be conducted on the Zoom platform and live streamed on Cohasset 143 TV. And our town Facebook page, the public is invited to participate on the Zoom platform, which can be accessed using the link provided at the top of the posted agenda for tonight's meeting. Members of the board and other scheduled participants will be able to participate when called on by me. And board members will be able to ask any questions of any participant and all votes taken tonight will be by roll call vote. Members of the public who wish to ask questions or ask to raise their virtual hands on Zoom. And I can promote you into the meeting, please provide your full name and address for record and note that comments on Facebook will not be monitored. This meeting is also being recorded and will be available for later viewing on 143 TV. And to begin tonight, we have an executive session scheduled to consider the purchase exchange lease or value. That may be detrimental to a negotiating position or a bargaining position for our public body. And our board will come out of executive session and go back into public session. Once our executive session is over. May I have a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in the second roll call vote for executive session.
Corey Evans, I.
Jeanne Haley did pull down.
Diane Kennedy, I.
And Carrie Thompson, I. All right, we will move over to executive session and then come back out, back into our public meeting once that's over. Thanks. See everyone there. Hi, Ryan.
Good evening. I thought I was the one messing up. I was gonna sit here.
We ran late in executive session. I apologize. I apologize to everyone waiting. We are good to go now. We are just waiting for Diane. She should be coming any minute. All right. We are back in our public meeting. And we have a new employee here to do the pledge for us, which you'll all be meeting in a little bit on the agenda, but Ryan, welcome. Thank you for being here. I see you got the flag ready.
Yep, that's right. Ready to go.
Yeah, and I will ask that you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to get the meeting going.
All right, awesome. So for those who'd like to participate, I'd like you to please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ryan.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. And we're excited to meet you when you talk about the youth center in a couple of agenda items from now.
All right.
So thank you. All right. We now will open the floor to public comment. If any member of the public would like to speak, please raise your hand and I can promote you into the Zoom room. I do not see any hands up now, but if I see a hand. Corey, I see your hand. Is that on purpose?
Oh yeah, I was just gonna bring up the thing I talked to you about earlier in the day. About my colleague, if now's an appropriate time.
Uh, you mean to wish our other select board member a happy birthday?
No, um, the passing of a fellow board member.
Oh, Corey, I'm so sorry. I had the moment of silence on here.
My apologies, sir.
No, I appreciate you bringing that back up. Also happy they select him in Creighton, but I also want to move that now to a more solemn. Update, Corey, the floor is yours.
All right. Um, yeah, I just, uh, I don't know how to begin the sentence, but last week, uh, the town lost a committee member, a community member. Peter Richardson, he, um, I don't think it's any secret. So, um, you know, those that do him, he'd been fighting ALS for a few years. He's somebody who, I mean. Was involved in almost everything. I mean, he was a multiple, um, you know, campaign advisor for multiple selectmen. He was. Um, on the Economic Development Committee in there in the 2000s, um, he called the football games. He was a founding member of the Wheelhouse Rodeo, the band that is playing on the common a couple of times a summer and is all over the place. You know, he also, uh, he was until the day he died, a member of the 143 TV committee. Um, and he was the treasurer for that. Um, and he was never somebody that, I don't know, he wasn't the. Type to kind of stand out front and get a lot of attention, but you know, he spent literally the last years of his life, just. I don't know, giving back. Um, and he was extremely generous to me personally. You know, I think we all know that when you get into this, you need a trusted ear and he was that for me. You know, he knew everybody. He was always generous with giving me time and explanations. He leaves behind two sons who are, you know, just, um, one who's just graduated and just seemed to be just amazing kids. They're fellow car geeks. And so, you know, the. Kind true to my heart and his wife as well. And it's just, it's a loss, um, you know, for the community for, for a bunch of stuff. You know, he was passionate. He was really part of the, you know, 143 is kind of trying to go through rebirth and he was just on the, on the front lines of that. And, um, you know, it's something where I guess, you know, we saw him suffer and, and, but just it, it, you never quite prepared. And it definitely happened quicker than, than I was prepared for. Um, so I want to thank him publicly here, um, even though he's not with us anymore. Thank his family for, for, you know, loaning him to us as much as he did. Um, and just, uh, you know. I'm trying to draw inspiration from him and I hope other people do as well, um, to just give what you can back. Whenever you can, uh, and, and that was just, it's really, uh, an example to, to follow. In the best possible way. So thank you, Peter. We'll miss you. Um, and, um, we'll, we'll continue on the, uh, the good fight. So thanks, guys.
Thank you, Corey. And I would like to request that we do a moment of silence in honor of Peter and all that he gave to our community. And thank you for those beautiful words, Corey, in honor of Peter. I appreciate it. All right, moving on to our community health update. I see we have both chiefs in here and Glenn is in here and Pam is in here. So come on in, our community health crew.
Pam is gonna be leading the presentation tonight, I think.
Wonderful. Hi, Pam. Hi, Glenn. Hi, chiefs. All right, Pam, whenever you're ready.
Chris, so you want to tee up the presentation? Thank you. So next slide, I'm just gonna give a brief, um, community update, um, really just focus on Cohasset. So next slide. You can squeeze that all in there, kind of missing the bottom. There we go. So this slide presents a number of cases from the beginning of the pandemic from March 2020 through August 2021. And so we've had, um, 11 cases in the last two weeks. They're all breakthrough cases. Last August, when we didn't even have vaccines, we had seven cases. So that kind of gives you an indication of how. How contagious the Delta variant is. So the breakthrough cases, by and large, um, people are not going to hospitals and they're not dying. Thank goodness. So the vaccines actually are working, even though people are still contracting. COVID. We go to the next slide, please. So anybody can access, um, there's several types of, um, databases online at the DPH website. And so. This one, I'm going to show you some stats. This one is COVID cases and fully vaccinated individuals. So next slide. So even though in Cohasset, um, so far a breakthrough case is like I said, alone in August, we had 26 cases. The vaccines are in fact doing their job. When you look at in Massachusetts, um. The percentage of people overall that actually, um, are coming down with COVID, it's only point 53% less than 1%. And the number of people that are actually being hospitalized is only 0.02%. And then if you could scroll down a little more, the deaths are even lower. I think it's 0.004. Yeah, it is 0.004. So even though our cases are in the rise, um, we do have to be careful because it's not foolproof, but by and large, the vaccines are working. So next slide, please. So in addition to getting vaccinated, the next best thing you can do to. Prevent or reduce exposure to COVID is, is mask wearing. So there's really like three sets of rules right now in the town. The schools have a mandate from, um, Desi, which is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And the current guidance is that, um, masks must be worn indoors for public school, school students ages five and above, any visitors, all staff. And this is going to be in place through at least August, I mean, October 1st. After that, if schools can demonstrate that they have 80% vaccination rate, then those that are vaccinated may remove their masks. But that's to be determined in the future. Um, exemptions are for people with medical and behavioral needs. Exceptions are for when kids are eat, or kids or adults actually are eating, drinking, or taking a mask break. So in Cohasset Municipal Buildings, which is the town hall, police and library and elder affairs, masks are required. Indoors for employees and all visitors, which is based on CDC guidance, which the town has implemented. And for private businesses open to the public, the question border health or public health and the CDC strongly recommend wearing masks indoors. So the takeaway is the next slide. Please get vaccinated if you are not already. Cohasset's vaccination rate is really great. But I believe for those who are eligible were up to 82%. So that does leave some room for improvement. The Delta variant is highly contagious and pretty much the only variant that's out there right now that everyone's getting. And vaccines have been shown to significantly reduce health risks. And please wear a mask indoors in a public setting to help control the spread. So that's my message.
Thank you, Pam. Glenn or the chiefs, would you like to add on to that?
Um, just to, to really hammer that same point that Pam just made. 4.5 million people in Massachusetts have been vaccinated, fully vaccinated. Those numbers that you see 23,000 breakthrough cases, the numbers are, the numbers are showing exactly what. Everybody expects it to do. The vaccine was never meant to be a hundred percent. It was meant to keep you from getting sick. And if you did get sick, to ramp up your immune system and keep you out of the hospital. And those things are happening. So the vaccines are doing exactly what they are supposed to do. And again, as Pam said, if you haven't been vaccinated, please get vaccinated. This is, you know, it's great that we live in the Northeast. And all you have to do is turn on the news every day and see what's going on in other parts of the country where the vaccination rates aren't quite as high. Uh, we are not flooding our hospitals, our ICUs are not being overrun. Uh, it's some pretty good stuff, but it really comes down to every one of us doing our fair share, which is go out and get vaccinated. So. That's the same message that I want to get out to everybody. So thank you for that.
Thank you, chief. And I have had a couple residents ask me again about booster availability. Pam, I don't know if you've heard any more about that. Have we heard if boosters and getting those, once they're available to everyone, are they going to be similar to how we had to sign up for the last ones? Or do you think it might be a little bit different? Will the town have more control over the boosters?
I think it will be different. So as of right now, um, the government still hasn't figured out, you know, who needs a booster and when, and that's still.
Right.
It's still up to for a decision, but there is a much greater supply now than there was, um, last spring. So we filled out a survey, the town of Cohasset Health Department to say that we would, we would gladly accept booster shots. And, um, we anticipate giving them to pretty much the same group of senior citizens that we did last time around. And people that require in-home visits, our town employees. I'd say most of the population will probably be going to CVS or Walgreens where their, um, primary care physician, but we will order. Vaccines and do clinics again, and it shouldn't be an issue this time getting vaccine.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Jean.
Um, I just had a quick question. Thank you for the update. That was helpful. Um, I had a quick question about our quarantine rules. I, I, I forget what they were frankly, last year when you're exposed to someone who's COVID positive. I know as a parent, I had to quarantine when I was exposing, keeping my children out of school for a certain amount of time. And I'm not asking about the school rules because I know that's a whole different ballgame. But, um, for just our town employees, um, who are in municipal buildings, what, what's our approach there?
So it depends if you're vaccinated or not. So if you've been fully vaccinated and you are considered a close contact. As long as you don't have symptoms, you can, you don't have to quarantine. It's a good idea. Say, say you were exposed to like, um, somebody you don't live with, like your coworker or something. Five days after your last exposure, you should get tested just to make sure everything's okay. It's hard to do if that's your family member, you know, you can't always like stay away from them. So we say, when was your last exposure? Well, it may be exposed to them every day. But let's just say in an ideal world, if you're fully vaccinated, get tested five days after your last exposure. If you don't have any symptoms, you can keep on working. If you do get any symptoms whatsoever, even if it's a runny nose, definitely stay home and start self-quarantining. If you haven't been vaccinated, then you do need to quarantine and don't go to work or don't go to school, whatever it is. And, um. Mary, you probably kill me. I'm, I'm forget the numbers, um, exactly how many days you have to quarantine. But I think you could get tested after day five again, and then you'd be free on day eight. And if you don't get tested, I think you have to stay out of the way for 10 days.
Okay, Chief Quigley, I see your hand.
Yeah, just, I'm gonna put Pam on the spot here. It's been a long day, but, uh, can you just, what, what, what a close contact is, I, I, you know, they keep on changing it. So I want to know what it is currently. It's, you know, 15 minutes for, yeah, I can't remember six, six feet.
Yeah, if you've been within some, within six feet of someone, the 15 minutes is cumulative over the course of the day. So if it's, um, like a coworker and you spent five minutes with them, you were kind of looking over their shoulder at their desk and then you went off and did something else. And you came back again another five minutes. So it can, it's cumulative. So 15 minutes total, six, within six feet, you'd be a close contact.
Thank you.
And I know this is constantly changing and I know this is brutal because it feels like the goalposts keep moving. So thank you again to all of you for just helping as much as you are and, and being part of this team. Because this is, this is not something we still thought we'd be doing right now in September. Chief Sylvia.
Um, just very quickly along that line to answer Jean's, uh, question. I would suggest that everybody go to the CDC website and take a look exactly at what the recommendations are. Because we are in a, in a area of high transmission. So in the area of high transmission, there are certain recommendations that they make. And they also make the recommendations, as Pam mentioned, for whether you've been vaccinated or not, and exactly what the ground rules are. So. You know, that's the quickest place to find all of that stuff. There's some great information right there and it's right on the front end of the, of their, uh, their website.
Thank you, chief. Any other questions on this issue? We will continue to do these updates as things keep progressing and changing. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right, next on our agenda, I don't know if I see him in the room. We are supposed to have Phil Mahoney come give us an update on our nine 11 ceremony on Saturday. I'm looking for him now. Hold on, I see. Miriam has a hand up. I'll promote you in, Miriam. Christine, have you heard from Phil? I know we started late. He might've been on time.
Well, hopefully Miriam's gonna give us an answer right now. I know we're looking, we're checking, I have.
So, so he had a personal issue that came up, uh, okay, waited as long as he could and then he had to go.
No problem. It's our fault for being late. So I did just want to recognize and let everyone know that we are still doing our September 11th ceremony on Saturday. I, I really can't believe it's the 20 year anniversary. I know we all remember where we were and it's just, it's mind blowing to think about how it's been 20 years. Do we have some basic details?
Yeah, uh, let me, let me share, uh, let me share the program. See that?
Yep, we can see it.
So it'll be on this Saturday, which is the 20th anniversary of September 11th. It'll, but it, and then again, it'll be marks by Chief Sylvia and the National Anthem, seeing prayers from clergy. remarks from Chief Quigley and Sylvia. Firefighters prayer. Another song from Louis Sistino and then reset tap. So the whole, the whole sermon is about an hour. Um, it's on the side by the flagpole. So we'll have this posted up on social media and on the town website for everyone. So I know Chief's gonna be saying too, if he has anything else to say.
And I just, I'm really proud of our town for continuing to do this ceremony. I think it's a really moving, powerful community event that we do every year. And I encourage everyone here and everyone watching to attend if they can, especially to mark the 20 year anniversary. Chief Sylvia, any other thoughts?
Um, no, it'll follow pretty much the same, the same guidelines that we've used, uh, for the last 15 or so years. I think Philip has, uh, has left enough space for Chief Quigley and I to be incredibly long-winded and I can guarantee you that won't be happening. So. The, the whole service is probably somewhere in a half, in the range of a half an hour instead of the hour that, that, um, Major Mahoney blocked out for us. And again, it is the 20th anniversary and I urge everyone to, uh, to come down to the common and partake in the, uh, in the service and, um. And remember those that perished that day and, and those that still struggle with the effects. From that day, whether they be health or mental or whatever the cases may be, there are, are still lots of people that are still suffering 20 years later. So to keep them in your thoughts and prayers and attend the service, yeah, would be, uh, a good thing to do.
Thank you, chief. Any other questions or comments about that? I hope to see everyone there on Saturday. All right. Moving on to our youth center opening update with Ryan, who we also get to meet. We met during the pledge. A little bit ago, but Ryan, it's, it's a pleasure to welcome you to Cohasset and just introduce yourself. You can tell us a little bit about you and then give us an update on the youth center.
All right, well do. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. Uh, so I'm Ryan Wallace from the new assistant recreation director for the town. Uh, working alongside Ted and Jenna down there. Uh, I come from, uh, working for the last four years, uh, for the state, for the Department of Youth Services and our recreation coordinator position. Uh, similar type position that I, you know, currently hold within the town. Um, you know, a much different community at large that I was serving. Um, but, you know, certainly happy to be here. You know, doing the job that we're doing, uh, especially with the rec center. So the rec center, um, is set to open tomorrow with the opening of the new school year. And a lot of, um, a lot of thanks to the maintenance team that's been there every day doing pretty much anything that we ask in a very timely manner. Again, coming from the state, they didn't hire as many people as they needed to do the job. So it was just, you know, to get something done. You required a lot of good timing, uh, which I certainly appreciate the expedience and the great work that they do. And really the, the attitude that they have, it's tremendous. Um. The before and after pictures of the outside, the exterior of the, the rec center is amazing. I mean, it's, there's really no other word. It was. I mean, it was a garage. I mean, that's, that's what it looked like and that's, you know, what it was. And yeah, that's, uh, one before picture. And we lost it. Uh, but yeah, the, uh, yep, some other before pictures. Yeah, I think it just got sent in a weird way. So, uh, I think she just has to go back and forth a little bit.
That's okay. There we go. There's the after.
Hey, this is, uh, the new updated look. I'm sorry if you can hear my baby upstairs. She's having a little bit of.
That's okay. She's also excited about the before and after.
Right. She's just cheering us on.
It looks amazing. I'm impressed.
And, uh, I wish I had more indoor pics. Um, just because it's not 100%, I didn't want to show anything that it wasn't. You know, the space even as, as good as it looks right now, it's not what it's going to be, uh, when we do our, um. Ribbon cutting ceremony and I think at some time in October, uh, so tomorrow's like the, what we're calling like the quote unquote, the soft opening. You know, we're gonna have, I think we're gonna have someone from the Mariner there. You know, nothing, nothing crazy, but you know, hopefully we have our members that have already registered there and, um, we're allowing other, uh, young students in the town. That even if they haven't registered, that, you know, they're welcome to come down and see the space for what it is, uh, because it's completely transformed from what it was. I had a student in there today who's a rising junior and he didn't recognize the space at all. Um, so that was good. And I think word of mouth is gonna be a real effective tool for us, um, as we continue to kind of create. Or recreate the identity of the rec center and the role it plays within the town.
And this is so critical, especially, you know, with the lack of socialization, a lot of our young people have had in the past couple of years. I know everyone's really excited. Ryan, I love your energy with this. It seems like you're the perfect fit for this new position. And I just, I'm really looking forward to our official ribbon cutting in October. We can get that scheduled, but this is also exciting that tomorrow we get to do the soft opening.
Yeah.
Well, welcome, Ryan. I have a very excited tween who can't wait to go to the rec center. But I wanted to say, because I think he would say, this is a great birthday present for our fellow select board member Creighton.
Yes.
Long advocated for the renovation and rehabilitation of the rec center. So that's great, um, including for him and he would love this. And I know he'll be there with you with the ribbon. Uh, so I just wanted to give him a shout out because I know he has, um, this has long been, uh, you know, something he's worked on.
Yes, and we would love to hear from you, Ryan, based on the soft opening. You know, what else do you think we need in there? What, how else can we make it better, right? Like, but I think this is a really good chance to get a feel for how else we can improve the inside and the amenities and everything that's going to be in there too. So please keep us updated with how things are going.
Yeah, we'll do. Absolutely. Um, I feel like just everything that will be in there is, is stuff that we do have. We have a TV, we just need a mount. Uh, we had a ping pong table that was delivered, but it was damaged. Like just, it was, it wasn't even salvageable. So we had to send it back.
Okay.
We were having another one. We had one, uh, the company that, uh, initially sent it, they just sent us a free one, uh, as a placeholder. Because the one that we ordered was like an Olympic, like real industrial, it's like the top of the line. So they're sending us a placeholder that will, should be here by Monday, hopefully. And, you know, we have a huge game board order on its way. And the, there's a recreation committee that was just put together that I kind of dovetailed off the Safe Harbor, um. Advisory Board meeting that we had, uh, two Sundays ago. And, uh, our first meeting is Monday, the 13th. So that's gonna help. Getting youth voices inside of the building, kind of seeing it for what it is, um, and planning accordingly, you know, structured activities and events for, you know, inside. But also again, dovetailing more so off, a lot of what Safe Harbor does in the community, which is what I would like to expand into as well.
Wonderful. Yeah. And if you have a wish list too of other things that maybe we can get people to donate or figure out a way to purchase, you know, keep that list going to see what else we need.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you so much. I appreciate the support.
Yay. Any other questions for Ryan?
Just congratulations. Good luck.
Yes. Have fun at the soft opening tomorrow.
Yeah, of course.
Know how it goes.
Will do.
All right. Thanks, Ryan. Moving on to more hopefully good news, fingers crossed. Don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but I'm very excited about this. As you all know, we struggled for a while to get any town clerk applicants to appoint for an interim position. I know we were all really worried in our last meeting about getting a good applicant and we found one. And I want to introduce you all to Kim Roy. I know her resume went out in the packet. She's actually a former select board member, I believe in the town of Halifax and a former town employee for the town of Norwell. So she, I actually think is the perfect candidate for this position, but I want the board to meet her. I want everyone to meet her. I would like you to introduce yourself, Kim. Tell us a little bit about you and we can all ask you some questions and why you're interested in this position. But we are grateful to have an applicant and I think this might be the perfect scenario. So Kim, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody for having me here. It's so exciting to be able to see all of you. And well, someday in person, but at least on the screen. So as my resume reflects, I spent most of my adult life volunteering for my community of Halifax in so many different capacities and it really became who I was. I really loved it. And when I listened to your previous guest children screaming in the background, that was me. And so it just brought a big smile to my face. But when I raised four sons with my husband and my youngest was graduating from high school. And because I had been part of the community for so long, I knew it would be hard to, to live there and not be part of it. And so my husband found this house in Hull and he said, hey, what do you think? And I said, we'll leave it up to fate. And they accepted the offer and I might've cried a little bit. Anyway, I love.
There's not a fire in your house, is there?
Did you see that? I know.
Flashing lights. Yeah.
Yeah, they're waving at me. No. Anyway, so I, you know, I spent a lot of time doing local government. The town in Norwell, when I first moved, said that they had some projects to do. I did their 10 year capital plan. I did some zoning things for them and then COVID hit. And then I thought maybe I would take a break from town government. Maybe I would pursue other avenues, but really it's who I am. And when I first heard about this opening last week, I was very excited about it because I liked the thought of a role that although I haven't played exactly, I know, you know, an overview of what the role demands. And I think it's a good fit for me being from out of town, being the interim. And you know, then the people can choose their candidate in the spring. And, but I can assure you that if I'm the chosen candidate, that I will take very good care of that department. And I will work my hardest for all of you. So that's me.
Him. And we also love that you're local in Hull. So you're close by. Yeah. Any questions for Kim from the board so far? I know we've seen her resume. I know I've met her before, but the board as a whole in the town is just meeting her. So. Corey.
Kim, thank you for being here. Yeah, your resume is just brilliant. And I think this is incredible stroke of good luck. Just, you know, I know you've talked about this with everybody, but I'm sure you know, but since we're in public media, might as well mention it. You're fully aware that this is, you know, a temporary position for us to decide, you know, coming in the spring, you know, there may be an election and that kind of stuff. So I just want to be sure. Okay, I'm nodding, so we're.
Totally. Yeah, I totally understand that it's temporary position and I understand that the clerk position is elected. I do not live with the community.
And I can't even run for it. You don't live.
No, no, that's why, you know, this is a good fit, I think, for your community.
Great. Thank you very much.
Diane.
Well, in full disclosure, I know Kim and have had the great pleasure of serving on some statewide boards with her. And what she hasn't mentioned is that she was also president of the Massachusetts Select Board Association for a number of years. President of the Massachusetts Finance Committee Group and has served on Maya and MMA's boards. So she not only is, is what, what we like to call municipal geek of, of the highest order. She really has tremendous respect all around the state at, at every level of municipal government. So I think this is a real win for Cohasset to fill this interim position and, and help us, uh, help us get to the next step. So thanks, Kim.
Thank you, Diane.
Thanks Diane. And as we know, this is just such a critical position at a really critical time in our state and country and our elections are sacred and it's just, it's everything that we wanted you to be, Kim, is, is, we're thrilled to have this. Have you fall into our laps like this. Jean.
Hi, Kim. I'm Jean. I just wanted to introduce myself. Thank you for your interest and your application. We appreciate you applying for all the reasons my colleagues have stated. I, I guess my only question that I have for you is your experience in running elections, which are indeed so critical. I saw that you had some experience indicated under the, I believe it was select board position for Halifax. I was wondering if you could just talk a little bit about that because I know that that's, that is the top of mind for many folks.
Yeah. So although, yeah, certainly. Although I have not served as town clerk, I have no experience at all of running elections. But I can tell you that I'm, I will pay close attention, take notes and I'm a pretty quick study. You know, Halifax, like Cohasset is a very small town. We were involved in, we would have bi-weekly, you know, department meetings. I was what I used to call a working selectman where I was there every day. We had a town administrator form of government. So I did a lot of projects on hand and worked with the town clerk on a lot. But certainly I have never run an election before in full disclosure.
Okay, thank you.
And on that note, Kim, I, I do want to make sure that you have a little bit of a chance to sort of study under Carol and get some training from Carol. I did want to ask Miriam about timeline too, in terms of when the dates are that we need to appoint you for. But I am hoping that you will be able to get some training and be able to use her as a sounding board and get advice for her while we still have her here as well.
Would you like me to jump in now?
Yes, yes.
Okay. We're all very happy that Diane actually mentioned this opportunity to Kim and Kim was interested. The process, what we need tonight is two things. We need the select board to decide if you decide to appoint Kim, the interim town clerk as of October 2nd.
Okay.
And then we need you to appoint her as the interim town clerk trainee as of tomorrow. So she would then start tomorrow and work with Carol, our existing town clerk, until October 1st, when Carol retires. And then Kim would be on her own after that. But I will say that in the interim, since our last meeting, not only have we talked with Kim, but the retired town clerk from Hingham has offered to come in and certainly help support, train Kim, our new law firm. I spoke with Carolyn today and at the end of Carol's time as town clerk, they will provide Kim with one-on-one coaching and training to get her through town meeting and the election. So I think we've really been able to find a number of resources at Kim's avail. You know, available to Kim depending on her needs, but she will have almost a month with Carol.
Thank you, Miriam. That's great. And again, I, I assume we're going to have people running for this position that maybe don't have clerk experience or who have never done this before too. So we're trying to keep that institutional knowledge going, right? So Kim, then you can help train whoever gets elected to this position. So it is really important to keep that continuity. I think, okay. Any other questions about process timeline, questions for Kim about anything else? Corey.
I'm comfortable making a motion. I would just, Miriam, could you just remind me the dates again? October for.
So we need the appointment as the interim town clerk effective October 2nd. And then the interim town clerk trainee effective September 8th.
All right. I would like to make a motion that we appoint Kim Roy, the interim town clerk for the town of Cohasset to begin on October 2nd, 2021.
We have a second.
Second.
All right, roll call vote.
Ray Evans, I.
Jeanne Lee Dipple, die.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. Okay. Yay.
I guess since I began the ball, I will.
The other one.
Rolling. I would also like to make a motion that we appoint Kim Roy, the interim town clerk trainee effective September 8th, 2021.
Do we have a second?
Second happily.
Roll call vote on that.
Ray Evans, I.
Can you lead the ball down?
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. Unanimous. Congratulations, Kim.
Thank you so much, everybody. I'm looking forward to working with all of you.
We are so excited to work with you and get to know you better and we are grateful for you and thank you for applying. And I just can't wait for you to get started.
I'm so excited. Thank you so much. And I'll see you tomorrow, Miriam. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Excellent. That's, that is a very exciting little bit of progress to make. I'm thrilled about that. All right. Moving on, we have a couple committee appointments to do. It shouldn't be too bad. Just to clarify, we have a couple for Conservation Commission. Justin Pimpare, we have not appointed at all yet. He was away during our last meeting, so we need to appoint him. And then also we need to reset Will Ashton's term after confirming the, the, the terms for CONCOM. So there are two three-year and two one-year terms. And Will Ashton was incorrectly placed into a three-year term. I take responsibility for that. That was my mistake last time. So tonight, we need to officially place him in a one-year term, which is remaining on an expired term of one year. And then Jay Pimpare would also be filling a one-year remaining on an expired term. So those are all part of the seven full voting member seats. So all of them would be full voting members. We still do have a position available on CONCOM, just FYI, a one-year alternate member term still remains and we have not filled that yet. So I think that was a little bit confusing last time, but I wanted to clarify for everyone what we are doing tonight. Are there any questions about that, Corey?
I was just going to, just for clarification, I think this is where I got a little bit caught up. They are all three-year terms, but they're just, so the term that we're putting Justin and Will on are, are they three-year terms that they started two years ago? So that it's actually a three-year block, but it's expiring. You know, it's not like that, it's not that there are.
Right, right, right. Yes, yes, yes.
Correct. Their three-year terms are just staggered.
Three-year terms, exactly.
Schedule's all messed up right now. Okay, so.
That's exactly right. The schedule's messed up. So yes, this is, yes.
Okay. And then do we have the date? So it's going to be for both Justin and Will will be for 2022. Do we have the actual date or the month for the expiration of those terms?
Usually June 30th.
June, okay.
I was gonna say, I believe, yeah, I, I believe it's end of June.
Yeah, I think it's in here. It's just not in front of me. Okay, thank you. That's all I got.
Okay. All right.
I can make a motion to, that we, okay, that'll just do it. So first, let's take care of Will Ashton. I'd like to make a motion that we adjust Will Ashton's term to expire on June 30th of 2022. As he's filling an unexpired term.
Second.
All right, we have a second. Roll call vote.
Ray Evans, I.
Jeanne Lee Dipple, die.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Right.
And then a motion for Jay Pimpare.
Oh, I didn't know if you wanted him to pop in and say anything.
Is he here? I did not see him. Oh, JP, that might be you. Hold on, JP, if that's you, I'm promoting you. I can't always tell with the initials of people in the waiting room. JP, is that you, Jay?
That's me.
Hi, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that was you with the initials.
Oh, I didn't. I, I actually, I didn't know. I was just listening in for the moment. It was just about the sign off.
So, yeah, yeah. So Jay, correct me, we messed this up last time, but we're trying to rectify it now. And you're, you're currently in a three-year term with one year remaining, correct? If we reappoint you tonight.
Well, actually, my term expired. My second three-year term expired, like, you know, June, we keep using the June 30th date. So my three-year term has expired. So it's actually a three-year term. If you were to reappoint me, would be a three-year term. I'm happy to be reappointed to a one-year term. I have no problem with that at all.
I, I think that, I think the slot that is open is the slot that ends next year. So if we appoint you to that slot, you are.
But. Because just, just to clarify, it's my position. It's my current position now. So as I understand, you've already appointed six full, six voting members, which have a three-year term. The last remaining three-year term is actually my term. And the associate positions like Will and the other associate are one-year positions. So it's actually a three-year position that's open now. It's my three-year term.
And I need Chris to clarify on this because Jay, we tried really hard to rectify this from last time because I had thought we only had two one-year terms left. So we are trying to do this correctly and this shouldn't be as hard as it is.
So the way you've described it, Carrie is correct. There are seven three-year terms that rotate, you know, every year, there's two or three people up. And then there's two one-year associates. At the moment, in the one-year associate or associate positions, there's a Chris, whose last name escapes me.
McIntyre.
Right, McIntyre, one year and there's a Vacantson. So at the last meeting, there were, there, there were four, there's, there's four full-time voting positions. Two terms that have one year left and there were two three-year slots. Tom Bell asked him to be, to move up and then Chris applied to.
McFarland and McIntyre.
Right. So what ended up happening is that Mr. McFarland got, was reappointed to a second three-year term. And Mr. Bell was given a first three-year term. This one ended up happening at the last meeting, which left a two. And there was confusion about, you know, again, and I, I own some of this mistake and look, look at this correctly.
I'm owning it too. We pretty much gave your term away, I guess, Jay.
So there's, there's still, so there's one year left on two different terms. So Will Ashton is getting, the new member is getting one of those. There's no other associate to move up. And then you get the other one. And then again, if you, if you're looking to stay again a year from now, because I think, I mean, that, that you can, you can come, come back with the board. If that, that's, that's how it would, would work. And I got, I got confused. That's the term set right now. So it makes sense.
Jay, your face.
Well, I'll, 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 I'll go with it. I'm a little confused, but I'm not complaining at all. The, I, you know, historical, the, the, the voting members, all of the positions have been three-year positions. So that my position that is open now, had I chose not to reapply, would have been an open three-year position. If you make it a one-year position, I have absolutely no problem with that at all. Happy to join for one year instead of the three years, if that's the way you're going to structure it.
And Diane, has, you've had your hand up. Is it about this?
It's just, so this, there was two unexpired terms, Jay. There was Jane's and Mary Ann's. So there was still a year left on both of their terms. So they're three-year terms, but two years are gone. So there's, those have to be filled as well. So you're filling one of those, the one year left. And then, and it's still three-year terms, only just one year left on it. And the same thing, Mr. Ashton. As opposed to starting out as associate member, he's at Chris's, at the chairman's request, and I think yours too, he goes full. He's on the job, but he's, he also has just the one, the one last year of a three-year term.
Yeah. So it's like the last year of the three-year term that then resets to three years. Again, I'm sorry that this is sounding way more complicated than it is. We, we're, that is not our intention. We're trying to do this right.
I, I'm fine with it.
All right. If we mess this up again, Jay, I'll own it and come back and tell you that. But I think what we have to do tonight is appoint you to this last year of this three-year term. There's one year remaining.
The alternative might be, you might be a lifetime appointment, Jay. So you might want to be careful about.
I'm fine with one year. Fine with one year.
Diane.
No, I, I just wanted to say that this is one of the most difficult to manage processes that we have. We've never really found the right way. All of the appointments are made for the fiscal year. So June 30th is always the expiration date. There, I can't remember like. another option, Kim's, for example, would be, because it's an appoint, it's an elected position, would be after the election. And, and everybody is able to stay on until the position is filled. So when somebody's term expires on June 30th, nobody is appointed into that position, they're able to continue meeting, especially in the hearing board. So I just wanted to clarify that, and I, I do hope this is something that maybe the interim town clerk can help us with. There, there's a lot of software programs that can help us outline expiration dates and what terms, you know, what seats are available and what the terms are. So anyway, I just wanted to give some context to that, but it is a one-year unexpired term.
Thank you, Diane. Jean.
I just wanted to thank Jay for his many, many, many years of service on the Conservation Commission. We are very lucky to have him, given his expertise as an environmental engineer for the EPA. Cohasset should consider itself lucky, and with that, unless people want to discuss further, I would move to appoint him to the Conservation Commission.
Second.
Thank you.
Expiring.
And second.
Should we add the expiration date?
Yes, go ahead, Corey.
Her term expiring at his discretion. No, I'm just kidding. Expiring June 30th, 2022, if that's accurate.
Yep, still second.
Second from Corey. Okay, roll call vote.
Ray Evans, I.
Jeanne Haley Dipple, die.
Diane Kennedy.
I, I assume you said I, Diane.
You made it. I'm sorry, I was trying to get my hand down.
Carrie Thompson, I. Jay, I love that you're trying to do this for even more than another year. So thank you for your enthusiasm and your hard work and everything you do for the town.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
I'm sorry about the confusion. Again, we're trying to do this better going forward. So all of us are, we're being open about how we need to do better at this.
You just freed, you just freed up two years of my life. Thank you.
Maybe it'll be a blessing in disguise. All right. Moving on to our CPC liaison for Open Space and Rec. We have Mary Ann Wetherald as an applicant here, and let's see, I don't know if, I don't think she is here. Just double checking. Corey, you have your, is that your hand up?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I think since CPC made the recommendation, we just have to rubber stamp it. This isn't like a normal appointment.
Yeah, no, it, it shouldn't be a problem. I just wanted to make sure she wasn't in the, in the audience here. Okay, do we have a motion?
Uh, I would, sorry, Chris.
Oh, Chris.
Just wanna clear, the, the, this is filling a one-year unexpired term, so it expires a year from now.
Okay.
Because wherever you reset all the terms, I just went to double check that. So this expires in 2022. And then that it re-ups in next year.
All right, I would like.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mary Ann Wetherald as the CPC liaison to Open Space and Recreation for the term expiring June 30th, 2022.
Second.
All right, motion and second, roll call vote.
Corey Evans, I.
Jeanne Haley Dipple, die.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. All right, thank you, Mary Ann, and congrats on that. And then our last one for tonight is the South Shore Recycling Co-op, which is actually a regional community group. And Brian Joyce is the one we will be appointing for this, and I know he is okay with that. I don't think he is able to be here tonight, but this also shouldn't be too controversial at all. So any, any questions on that one? Or are we okay moving forward with it?
I mean, he's our TVW director, and he's also resident town, so it seems to make a lot of sense to me. So I'll make a motion.
Yes, go, Corey.
I, I'd like to make it, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Brian Joyce as the South Shore Recycling Co-op representative.
Do we have a second?
Is there a term? Oh, yeah. It is a three-year term.
For a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2024.
Okay.
Thank you for the math.
It's hard to think about 2024, I know. All right. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second, perfect. All right, motion and a second, roll call vote.
Ray Evans, I.
Jeanne Haley Dipple, die.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. Thank you, Brian, for all that you do for that. All right, those are all the appointments we have for the night. And now, moving on, I want to allow, get Ralph Dormitzer in here to give us an update on Massport and Logan Airport and what's going on with that whole situation. Ralph, I'm sorry, we're running late tonight, but we're looking forward to hearing what you have to tell us. Oh, hold on, you're muted, Ralph.
All right.
There we go. Yes, we can hear you now. Thank you for being here.
Okay, well, thank you for asking me to do this. You may know, or you may not know, that I am your representative to the Massport Community Advisory Committee.
Yes, it's very important. Most people don't know it exists, but it's important.
I could use the screen share capability, if you can do that for me.
Yep, coming right up.
We all said, I gave him access.
Yeah, no, you should have it, Ralph, if you try to just screen share.
I've got it. Okay, let me go get that. Good. See where we are. Here we go.
Yep, we can see it.
Okay, good. I gotta move it to slideshow, so it's a little bit bigger. Okay, here we go. You have to know that this thing is, the, the Community Advisory Committee has existed for a very long time, but for this purpose, this is the Massport Community Advisory Committee, which is really was started in 1956, and which is funded by Massport to the, at the current rate of about $300,000 a year. It consists of about 35 communities around Boston, of which we were, we are one. And of course, includes Hull, Hingham, Situate, and all the surrounding communities. It is really structured more or less around airport operations, although it also covers seaport operations and other aspects of what Massport does. My primary concern, and it's been that for a long time, is really airport operations and the noise over Cohasset, as you may or may not know. I structured this presentation in such a way that I can sort of tell you what, so you can understand what the noise impacts are over Cohasset. Then why we in fact got some relief several years ago. And then some proposals about what we might do going forward to actually enforce some of the, some of the original agreements, which are now, to a large degree, observed casually by the FAA and by Massport, which is one of the issues that we need to talk about a little bit tonight. But anyway, let me start with what in fact the noise impacts over Cohasset are. Let me see if I can just jump that down. Okay. What I've done here is I'm showing you a chart of all of the flights and flight arrivals and departures all from Logan Airport, but I've highlighted in yellow those arrivals and departures which affect us. And what is interesting about this slide, I hope you understand, is that if you look around, you will see that in only one instance does a departure or arrival not affect Cohasset. In fact, Cohasset in fact sees arrivals on runway 33, departures on runway 9, departures on runway 22, departures on runway 515, and departures on runway 4. That's an extraordinary amount, and I don't think any other community, including Hull, can say that there are that many flights, overflights, although not as noisy as Hull and not as noisy as, for example, Chelsea or Winthrop. But we have an enormous quantity of planes that actually cross Cohasset. Next slide. The other piece I'll show you is you can see the percentages of each. So when you have, since you have this in front of you, you can see that roughly 30 to 33% of the flights add up to 99%. So most times, we have a flight over Cohasset. It's not entirely true that it would be 99%. It's probably like 70%, but there's probably a flight over Cohasset 70% of the time. That's a lot.
Interesting.
Yeah. The one that people are most concerned about, the noisiest ones, the ones that in fact, in fact fly over, for example, oh, Rose Hill, the Avalon, the dump, when you're there, Cohasset Golf Club, there are rivals on 33. When they come over Cohasset, they're about one a minute, and they are at typically, they're supposed to be at 3,000 feet. Often, they're below 3,000 feet, as you probably know, when you look up. That is about the noisiest kind of flights that we get, but we get a huge number on an annual basis. Not on that chart you saw, but on an annual basis, it's probably 17 or 18% of all of the flights are similar to this. You will see in a letter on the bottom of all of this, there's a letter from our representative, Stephen Lynch, in which he says that Milton is the most affected. Milton has exactly the same circumstances we do. We are the same, the same effect that Milton experiences, Cohasset experiences, except that we have all the rest of the flights. So this one's the noisy one. This is the one that gets the complaints generally. Next slide. These are departures on runway 9. Departures on runway 9 come over Cohasset. They were planned to come over Cohasset. And you can see a bunch of waypoints. And all of the flights generally stay north of the waypoints. None go south, although they're supposed to be north and south of the waypoints. And you can see they just saturate Cohasset. These are, these are always used when the, when the winds are out of the east, and that's fairly frequently. Again, this is like 33% of the time. These are also quite noisy, but not quite as noisy as the arrivals, and the principal reason is that they are higher. They range between probably 9,000 feet and 12,000 feet, depending on how well the controllers do. But you'll notice some really anomalous things. If you look at my cursor on the yellow, and then you look at the cursor on the light blue, these are all planes which are actually cutting the corner. They're not following the procedures that were agreed to, and the procedures, and I'll draw the cursor, the procedures that were agreed to are this way. In other words, they were meant to be higher, and they were meant to, I'm gonna go back, I messed up on that, but anyway, I'll go on it to 22, but anyway, this is very similar situation. Runway 22 has got the same circumstance. They fly out of Co, out of Logan, they fly this route, the actual route, as you can see with my cursor, is like this. None of them actually come anywhere near the waypoint, with the crossing point here is actually in Situate. But on the previous two, runway 9, the agreed upon crossing was to be Cohasset, and the agreed upon crossing for 22s was to be Situate. However, Cohasset is saturated with these flights as well, because the controllers direct the flights manually, as you can see in the green and the, and the blue and so on. So what happens is, these are low-flying planes, and we get an awful lot of them. I'm gonna go to the next slide. I thought it would be interesting to understand what is in fact noise by virtue of the planes that fly over us and what the FAA says. The FAA says that 65 decibels on average day and night would be considered to be noisy, and that is similar to a diesel truck at 40 miles per hour at 50 feet, or maybe a vacuum cleaner at three feet. In other words, it's fairly noisy. However, when you average these flights, it's very hard for Cohasset ever to experience 65 decibels. We probably experienced 55 decibels on average, so you understand what we experience here. I'm gonna go on to the next slide. The history of this whole thing. In 2001, a number of us from Hull, Situate and Cohasset visited the tower. They visited with the then-tower manager and suggested two things to him. One was that these flights coming over Cohasset be divided between some going over Hull, some going over Cohasset, and some going over Situate. He disagreed with us, and nothing happened at that time. We also recommended that a fair number of the arrivals on 33 go in through Hull Guts, not necessarily directly over Cohasset, and he disagreed with that as well. However, after this confrontation, and because Boston was concerned about what these flights were doing as well, a number of lawsuits were conducted, including those funded by Cohasset. There were probably three or four total lawsuits before the Superior Court. And the Superior Court decided that in fact, they would grant mitigation to the towns, specifically the South Shore towns. As a result of the fact, they were also granting the right for Massport to build a new runway called 1432. And the meaning of that for us was that the same as the 33 arrivals, 32 arrivals, would significantly increase the amount of traffic over Cohasset, and that's why we sued. Cohasset put up $90,000 as part of that. And as a result, we did get a mitigation study. We were granted a total of $8 million for that study, and it did have positive effects. Let me go on to it. This is the initial slides of what we had proposed, and I'm not gonna dwell on it, but I'm gonna show you how, when a plane leaves the runway, if you, for example, take the easiest one to show you, which is runway 9, the curve is, I'm following my cursor, is there. It goes over Cohasset. It goes outside of Minus Light, and it comes over Cohasset. I shouldn't do this. I'm backing. Let me go back up if I can. I'm not sure I can. Let me go back. Yeah. What's interesting about this set of proposals that in fact got adopted was that if you were departing on runway 4, which goes north, you would cross in Hull. If you were departing on runway 9, you would actually cross in Cohasset, and if you departed on runway 22 or 15, you, you crossed in Situate. The results of that, because that's in fact what was actually finally done, is that I overlaid how a flight from runway 22, get the cursor there again, if I can. All right. How, if you actually follow that same plan, you'll see that the planes at that time were quite faithful and actually following that track. They didn't come over Cohasset. They went down over Minus, exactly as they should. However, in 2013, the FAA decided to do two things. One is they, they changed the routes, actually, specifically this one. And they gave the controllers the right to actually change and not use the RNAVs if they didn't want to. And the result of that is this saturation of flights, mostly over Cohasset. And so what was defeated in 2013 and implemented in 2015 is what we experience today. Runway 22 is in fact violating a set of agreements which were cast as a result of a court order, and for which Massport and the FAA are responsible. They have never been willing to do anything about it, and that's why I'm here to tell you what we, I think we ought to do about it. Let me go on to the next slide. I suggest, and this, this language has been issued also by the Massachusetts Community Advisory Committee, requesting that there be a quantitative data review of the RNAV routings of departures from Logan International Airports from runways 49 and 22, lifted right, including shoreline crossing altitudes and distance from the shore crossing waypoints as related to the Record of Decision of 2007 and fulfillment of the mitigation obligations of the Federal Aviation Administration Record of Decision dated August 2nd, 2002. So what is the significance of a rod, a Record of Decision? It is an order, a requirement of the Federal Aviation Administration, and it is the authority of Massport to make sure that those are agreed to. Today, there is a general violation of those rods as they are enumerated and are written out. And so what I am suggesting, and the same thing that the Massport Community Advisory Committee suggested, but is that in fact, there ought to be a review that the FAA appear before the COHAS Select Board to review the findings if they have done that data review, and I'll talk about what that's, what's happening on that. So that in fact, we have a, an opportunity to discuss with them why in fact it does not appear that the Records of Decision are in fact being enforced or used. The, the only other thing I will point out about all of this is that Massport is the responsible party, and so they would be invited to this kind of a meeting. And at the same time, Stephen Lynch believes that Milton is the most affected community, which is made for a political problem here, and that the use of what they call over-the-water flights, and you have seen the letter if you've read it. Over-the-water the flights are the way to actually improve the noise environment around the greater Boston. The reality is that over-water means over Cohasset or over Hull or over Situate. It never means over the water, because all planes, except for those gone, international flights cross over the shoreline at some point. I don't need to go much farther than that at this moment, but I, what I'm saying to you is, we do need to have the FAA appear before us. They have said they will actually do a data review. They have not done it yet. And there is a reasonable possibility that once they do that. And there is a reasonable possibility that once they do that, that they probably do feel responsible to actually visit the town. As they have visited other towns at other times. And we can discuss in fact, why we can't get the Record of Decisions agreed to again and get some of the noise reduced. The only other thing I can point out to you is that we have had a study going, conducted by. MIT to try to improve the noise environment in all around Boston. It has not had a huge number of successes, but in fact, there are some small successes. And one of them, I will show you in a slide you don't have in a second. This is a, is a proposal, which I believe the FAA has agreed to implement. Which says that flights, which are those that really figure, look at the blue alone. Those are flights that would normally go over Cohasset and their arrivals on three-three, the noisy ones. FAA has agreed to create a series of RNAV or waypoints, which would allow those flights to come in outside of, beyond Cohasset. And come in the Hall Guts and swing into the airport itself, or if they're coming in from the north, do the same thing. At the present time, none of them do that. They all come down and they come down and they swing in directly over Cohasset. This proposal in fact is going to be implemented. The problem with it is that the controllers will probably not use it except in the most, the slowest possible times, meaning the midnight to four AM. A midnight to five AM timeframes during the day, they will not use it because they probably will say they cannot sequence the flights. And what that means is they cannot in fact, separate the flights one from the other, which have to be at three miles adequately. If they have to use this kind of a runway, a runway approach situation. Anyway, that's, that's the whole story from me. There's lots more I can say and I would love to have questions.
Thank you, Ralph. That was really interesting and very good visuals. A plus on the visuals. And this is obviously a problem that we've all noticed has gotten worse in town. I know a lot of citizens have brought it up to us. So I really think this is timely and I appreciate that info. I saw Jean's hand first and then Diane's.
Well, first, thank you, Ralph, for the presentation. I've, I used to live in East Boston and knew a lot of the airport advocates there. But I've learned more today than I have in the last multiple years of my life. I did have a question about the agreements that followed from the Superior Court decision way back when. Were those agreements used to in fact, implement the court's order?
They were in, they were to satisfy the court order. The court order said that there shall be mitigation. Okay, that's what they said. Mitigation for the building of runway fourteen thirty-two, there would be mitigation. Subsequent to that, the FAA agreed to specific mitigation requirements, and those included those routes I showed you. And they included those in the initial two thousand and two Record of Decision. So those were legally binding commitments to do something. So two thousand and two granted or required the FAA to both fund, that is Massport FAA, to fund the study. And simultaneously to attempt to reach agreement with the South Shore communities. In two thousand and seven, however, they became fixed as actual routes that they would observe. So there were two different Records of Decision.
Okay. And just a quick, yeah, just, so is, is there manual deviation from those routes? In essence, a violation of those court orders slash decisions?
Yes.
And you do think that, that making this motion tonight, Ralph, would help push this issue along with the FAA?
You would be in concert with the Massachusetts Community Advisory Committee and say this. We would have the same language. It's the same as they have agreed to. And to some degree, the FAA has agreed that at the conclusion, it was known as the RNAV study, which is about to conclude about, at the end of September. That they would now do this quantitative assessment, although they have said already that they believe they're observing the rod. So there, there is a dispute about this, but they are willing to reexamine the, the actual performance of aircraft and what is happening.
Okay, thank you. Diane.
I, I just wanted to say thank you to Ralph. He's been at this for so long and, and unfortunately, not much has changed. Despite, you know, tremendous, other than obviously corridors, et cetera, we've been hearing. These concerns for a very long time in terms of the disproportionate level of noise and, and traffic that we get over Cohasset. So thank you so much. I know you've been at this for at least ten or fifteen years, maybe even longer. So.
And a lot of people do think it's gotten worse, me included. I live up on a hill and I swear it's gotten a lot worse in terms of volume and lights and everything. So.
I have a, yeah, I have a friend who calls Massport. I literally, I haven't talked to her in a little over a year, of course, but literally every single day for the past twenty-something years. Let's hope some progress can get made at some point. It's not for lack of trying.
Yeah, I think you, you do need to. You need to confront the situation. I'm gonna show you a video of what I think. Will make the FAA think a little bit about what they have been saying. And if you, if I've got the share screen again, I will show you a video of something which I think is.
You should still have that capability. And then Cory, I know you have a question waiting in the wings.
I'm gonna show you something quickly here if I can. Host disabled participants screen sharing, so I don't appear to have it. Cory, do you have, I got it now, do you think?
Hold on, trying to, I don't.
I think I got it now. Okay.
Okay.
This is a, this is a video taken on the twenty-fourth. These are departures. These will be departures on runway two-two. August twenty-fourth, five PM. As you will know, and this is sped up about ten times. Notice these flights here.
We'll see your.
Ralph, we can't see, we can see the thumbnail. We see the thumbnail, but I.
Unshare and then reshare.
Okay, okay, we'll do that. New share. Try this again. Do you see this now?
Yep, yep, we see it now. That's cool. It's like a video game.
Well, what it is, Massport actually publishes this. You can see this yourself if you want to. Notice where these planes are flying. They're flying out of two-two, and guess where they're flying? They're just turning and going over Cohasset.
Yep.
So what really is happening is that they are just plain ignoring the agreements. I mean, it's just the most astonishing. Here's one plane that sort of goes over Situate, but not exactly right. It is an astonishing video that says that anything they say, that say they don't, they watch this plane cross Hall. It's just awful. And cross, they cross Cohasset incredibly, incredibly low altitudes. This plane close to Hall High School, the whole thing is a disaster. I mean, it's seriously a disaster. And this is, you can go get this yourself. It's what it looks like when they're flying from runway two-two. Really terrible. Anyway, that's enough for that. So you see. Yeah, I don't.
Really interesting. Thank you for sharing that video. I didn't even know these videos existed. Thank you. Cory, you've had a question.
Yep.
No, I was just gonna make the observation that this seems like a, something which we should prepare to have a never-ending battle with, where it seems like. You know, this was figured out fifteen years ago and then something happened. And I think there's always gonna be a regression to. I don't wanna say convenience, but, but, but to not follow these. So Ralph, thank you for, I think the only way to combat this is just for somebody to constantly be on the train to ensure that, you know, the checks are followed. So, you know, thanks for bringing this to us and I'm fully in support of, of getting behind this. So.
Yeah, I am too. And I'm fully, I'm fully supportive of making the motion you suggested to Ralph. Jean, you just put your hand up.
Yeah, and it, it seems like Ralph, maybe, and I'm sure that this is a thought in the advisory group's mind. But it, it does seem like it would be worthwhile to, you know, consider trying to enforce those agreements in court. You know, Judge Botzford is now on the Supreme Court of Massachusetts. She's a well-respected judge. Her decisions are well-respected. And so I think that, you know, having. Evidence like what you have right now on the historic replay is, is great. And the data is even better to show. Everything that you've, you've portrayed. And so I think we can talk more about that. But I do think that, that sometimes is an effective way to make sure that agreements are in fact enforced.
I agree with you.
The political process.
Yeah, I agree with you, Jane. Almost every. Change or enforcement has resulted in having to go to court. I hate to tell you that. And it goes back thirty years. The, not, Massport and the FAA do not do anything willingly anymore. There was a time when we were doing the study, when we had people who were quite frankly, very good and did do some things for us. But as Cory said, there's a sort of backsliding on this whole thing, and that's what's going on. Yeah, right.
Yep. So is the board comfortable with making the, the suggested motion that Ralph brought up tonight to, to kind of push this along and show that we care about this issue?
Yeah, I've got the language in front of me if, okay. I would, I make a motion to, that the Select Board, Cross Select Board requests that the Federal Aviation Administration conduct a quantitative data review. To the RNAV routing of departures from Logan International Airport from runways four-nine and twenty-two L slash R. Including shoreline crossing altitudes and distance from the crossing waypoints as related to the Record of Decision of two thousand and seven. And in fulfillment of the mitigation obligations of the Federal Administration, Federal Aviation Administration Record. Of decision dated August second, two thousand and two, as enumerated in section eight mitigation measures of that ROD. And that the FAA appear before Cross and Select Board to review the findings of that data review.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Roll call vote.
Could I just ask a question?
Yeah, oh yeah, sorry.
Just, just, just in terms of process, would, would we be communicating this through a letter that the town, that we authorize the town manager to do, which we could do separately? Or? How is this going to be affect, you know, moved to the next place?
I assumed it would be some written letter. Diane, that's a very good question, though. Ralph.
It, it usually is submitted formally by the organization that's actually responsible for it. In this case, the Selectmen, I would think are the responsible party here. Yeah.
So we can just double-check procedurally if, if the five of us need to sign it as a board, or if Chris can sign it for us, we can check on that. But it will be some form of letter.
It'll be managed through our office. Yeah, great. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay. Now roll call vote.
Corey Evans, I.
Can Haley Dipple do it?
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. Thank you, Ralph. Thank you for this update. Thank you for pushing the issue along. I know a lot of residents care about this. I know that it's an issue that is not going away. So we really care, we care about it. And thank you for fighting this good fight.
Thank you.
All right, we will be in touch. That was really interesting to see all those slides. I enjoyed that presentation. All right. Moving on. To another environmental related issue, we have our AEC back with, I believe, Tanya Bodell and I think Brianna Bennett in the wings. We are bringing them in right now. This is a follow-up discussion from our last meeting about the creation of the BRIC grant and the readiness assessment. I know it's a long term that we discussed with the BRIC last time, but I know this was, this is time sensitive. And we wanted to bring it back on the agenda based on what we heard at our last meeting. So Tanya. And Brianna, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. So thank you for having us back again so quickly. As you will see, the, there's a lot of work to do if we want to pursue this here today. To see what you would like us to do. As you know, the Alternative Energy Committee has no authorization on its own to do anything. So we come to the Select Board to give you updates on what we're doing and to make sure we're walking in tune to what you'd like us to do. So the opportunity we're here to talk about, we had mentioned in August, at the end of August. The opportunity is to pursue a FEMA BRIC grant. There is a billion dollars for reliability, resiliency projects, including potentially microgrids, which could be a solution for the Cohasset. Power supply problems. And we're just gonna give a quick overview. If I could, let me see, I'll share my slides, quick overview. And then we have proposed motion language. You can adjust as you'd like, but potentially to motions. All right, so. Let's slideshow this. All right, I'm assuming everybody can see this. All right, so we're basically here to request permission to pursue a BRIC grant for the Cohasset microgrid. We'll explain to you why we think this is a good idea. We'll give you a quick opportunity overview, the proposed motions. And then the next steps, as you'll see, we need to be spending the next four months working on this to get it in on time. Although the deadline's actually January twenty-eighth, the state decides who to submit. And so we need to send it to the state earlier. So as everybody in this town knows, we have an unreliable energy supply. It can be blue sky and our power goes out. And if you compare us to the national average, you see how dramatic it is. The number of outages for Cohasset annually is twenty-five, whereas the national average is one point five. I'm not going to get into this, but we have had ongoing conversations with National Grid. We can't do this without them. So we're trying to suss out with them, how far do they want to go? And we have an update on that. But they do acknowledge that our feeder line has been in the bottom, the five percent worst with respect to the time it takes to get back up and running. We have extreme weather events. The storm surges and sea level rise could create more problems around our essential services. And this is something I think we have mentioned before, but there is state pressure for the gas companies to start weaning the Commonwealth off of gas. And for those of you who have had the only warmth in the house due to natural gas-fired heat or a gas-fired stove that's boiling the water. You know, that is a nice diversification for us and backup. We will be in a lot of trouble if they take that away. But as we all know, the struggle is real. We have done some, a lot of work up to this point, looking at this. We had a resilience workshop in two thousand and eighteen. This was part of an MVP grant, and in that it cited reliable power as one of the highest priorities. And the development of microgrids as one of the potential solutions. We have tried the other solutions and we are still having outages. So some of them have been very helpful. Some of them haven't maybe been as implemented as they could. Some of them are just not working. So we are looking at microgrids as a solution. We've talked before multiple times about the four phases that the Alternative Energy Committee has looked at. National Grid needs to be involved at phase three and phase four to be able to cross rights of way, help manage the system. If we were to be a microgrid across public rights of way, but they're involved no matter what. Because even in phase one and phase two, they have to provide the interconnection agreements for the system. Even if it's, for example, at the school, or if it's at the police fire department in Harborview, which we're studying right now. So they're very important and we're trying to, you know, definitely bring them along. Based on the conversation this morning, they are looking potentially at helping us get to phase three. They do not feel like they're just ready at this point to do an entire mini-grid. They don't have the capabilities. This is something more innovative than they've traditionally done, but they're interested in taking it for a ride. So I don't know if we'll get to phase three, but most certainly we can do phase two. With National Grid as our friend, but not necessarily crossing public rights of way with the distribution system. And phase three, just so you remember, would be a downtown mini-grid. It would basically have a backbone to provide power to our essential services when the lights go off. This is something that we could ask for funding from the FEMA BRIC grant. It's sexy. It's exactly what they're looking for. They've specifically noted, microgrids are considered mitigation. And this could be a way for us to protect our most vulnerable residents. There would be power at the schools as we already have, but it'd be clean power. There would be power, backup power at the police and fire station, the P W station. And we could do this with the bids that we've received under our solar RFP. So last year, we talked about this, just so you know, what would it look like? We still have to pencil out numbers as part of this process, but you can, we can provide in-kind support, incremental cost. Of new roofs, electric buses, backup batteries, geothermal, upfront capital that could be reimbursed by an enterprise fund. This is potentially a money-making opportunity for the owner of these assets. We could get half a million dollars alone from capacity payments if we were to do a town-wide mini-grid. So there's opportunities to help fund that twenty-five percent. The state has indicated that they're very interested in this and would be looking at being able to provide with technical services and potentially grants. National Grid has some opportunities and, um, Eppery and some of the vendors we've talked to are interested in participating. So I don't think that full twenty-five percent cost share, I know it would not be totally on coacet. But again, this is part of what we're asking you for, which is let us suss this out, figure it out and determine whether or not we're ready to, um. Proceed. So that's basically a request is, do you want us to pursue this? A seventy-five percent FEMA BRIC grant opportunity with under other funding sources. Um, figuring out how to get the twenty-five percent match with as little as possible coming from coacet. Um, as a town, but knowing there might be some expenditure. And we'll come to you before we put forward the proposal in in the submitted form. And and the other is to establish, uh, grant readiness assessment board committee to be able to review the grant opportunity, advise you on how we recommend we proceed. And we would recommend that this be a, um. Representation from all of the major committees, just because this impacts everybody. If we're talking about the schools, using the schools as some of this, um, reliability, resiliency. Obviously, they need to be involved. Capital, this could be a way to save capital money on expenditures that they'd want to go forward with. Um, we just have to be aware of that. And then the town hall building committee, for example, if we're going with geothermal. We could put geothermal into the proposal and get seventy-five percent of that paid for. So there's a lot of opportunity in in wrapped in this package of reliability, resiliency and microgrids to, um, really put forward something that I think would be very successful. But we need a committee to basically contribute ideas and review the proposal. We we may need some technical support from MAPS C, but we do have, uh, the wherewithal, the people, I think, to be able to do that between our town staff and the Alternative Energy Committee and some of the team members. So the proposed motions, there's an appendix that has a repeat of what we presented two weeks ago. The first motion would be to establish the committee. And this sort of lays out in our minds what the purpose would be for. It'd be very focused ad hoc committee. And it would obviously not exist once we had submitted the proposal. And then the second would be to assign representatives from the town bodies. We don't want that to be mandatory because it is a very tight timeframe, but, uh, to the extent we can, you can recommend that assignment if that you feel comfortable with that. I just think it'd be the fastest way to allow for updates. Um, going back and forth in communication on what we're trying to do. So those are the two motions. Uh, this has updated dates based on the submission to the state. That has to be done before we would be chosen, if we're chosen by MEMA on December sixth. And then they would submit the final proposal, January twenty eighth, when it's due to FEMA, the federal energy or the Federal, um, Emergency Management Agency. So that is where we are and, uh, the process will help define where we can go. And and part of that depends on how far National Grid wants to take it with us. But even if they don't want to, um, help us connect the assets across public rights away with the distribution system, there's still resiliency that can be achieved, um, by getting to phase one and phase two. Of our initial conceptual. That's it.
Thank you, Tanya. You actually just answered my one question, which was about what happens if National Grid does not follow this timeline or doesn't can carry this on as long as we are. But it seems like we have kind of nothing to lose regardless of what they decide.
Yeah, and I want to say the process, or as I think into the process, um, itself is very valuable. The conversations we've had with National Grid as part of this has really highlighted to them our challenges. And, and, you know, they have gone and grabbed the data and we've grabbed the data and we've debated about what the data says. But, um, they are aware and I I I'm not sure that they necessarily would care or be aware or be looking at it, just wouldn't rise to their level, um, because we're so small. Unless we were making a lot of noise. So this is a nice process to learn about our system. Um, work with these relationships. And I think that regardless, um. There there's benefits to be had, but I do really firmly believe we are potentially one of the more advanced towns in thinking about this. And I think it, um, it it proved to be very interesting to the state. And I think it would be very appreciated and interesting to the federal government.
Diane, you've had your hand up a while and then Jean.
Yeah, I did. I have a couple of questions and in Tanya, they may not even be answerable right now, but I'm like looking at writing the grant. And, um, a couple of questions is, do we have to identify the matching funds when we submit the request for funds for the full project? Yes. Okay. And so that's obviously something that needs to be really played out. Um, and then in terms of the actual project, the phase one, two, three, four, what's the approximate timeline for that? To get us through phase one, phase two, phase three, space four, assuming we're going to get funding and we've got all. Sure, sure. So, um, we would, depending on how far National Grid wants to go in helping us implement phase three and or phase four, or or maybe even not at all, that's going to drive what we would propose. Um, this process would help us decide in conjunction with National Grid. Do we feel comfortable going for a full scale mini mini grid? Or can we only, you know, go to phase two? Where we have sort of in situ within property borders, not crossing right away. Um, reliability, resiliency at some of the key areas in town that's needed for emergency response and services. And so the BRIC grant itself has to be implemented in three years.
Okay.
So we would design whatever we're proposing to be implemented in the three years. Thank you. I just have one other question, which might be more for Chris, which is just kind of a, um, governance execution on on the grant writing and, um, this ad hoc committee. That, you know, we went through this last year when we were setting up master plan implementation committee meetings, uh, groups because they're not technically committees. They're more working groups. Um, it it might be just semantics, but I think it's important to know kind of who's at the table hammering this stuff out when ultimately the town has to submit the grant. So I I I guess I'm looking to Chris too. Is there, is there staff that we can dedicate to helping Tanya and other chosen, um, individuals to to make this happen by January twenty eighth? And is it something that we should consider? You know, I don't know, getting some assistance for, and we don't have to decide that now, but I just want to make sure we can handle it. We can make this happen and it's not on the backs of volunteers as, because ultimately it's it's the town. The select board and the town manager's, um, grant application.
Really good point, Diane. Chris?
If you want to jump in right now or not, so.
Yeah.
What I will say, uh, again, I I've talked to Tanya about this, and we've been involved, the conversations are exciting. Um, that said, it's a pretty tight timeframe. And, uh, so I'm, you know, the next item on the agenda is to talk about the goals that you've all set. If this, if you say go forward with this, this effectively becomes your fourth goal, but it's also going to take time away from um, at least the public facilities planning big questions for at least a couple of months. Because there's just only so much time. I can't clone Michelle. Uh, I can't clone Brianna. Uh, and I I do think, uh, with the 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 great technical support that, um, that we've got from Tanya and some others on the AC, I think that will help. And if we need to bring on somebody, I think we can identify that fairly fast. And figure out if you need to bring on someone for technical stuff, I think we probably could with some existing. We have, we have some money for, you know, these kinds of opportunities, not a lot of it, but enough, I think, to do the, uh, technical grant writing, uh, and and perhaps some of the analysis. And again, I think we'll know that better over the coming weeks. Process Diane, uh, so to generate a committee, which you can also do simply is just charge me with creating a committee in this form. Rather than have it all come back to, uh, and 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 come back with, you know, with that format and 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 it'll get done. And so, um, that's another way to form the committee and I can seek representatives from all those other groups.
From a governance standpoint, with with respect to grant writing, I think that's the way to go. Because you're the sign off, but, um, yeah, I mean, I think this is really exciting. And, uh, you know, dealing with electrical issues in town and 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 resiliency has been a select board goal. Either, um, you know, in those exact words or or within something else for part of five, six years. So fully in favor with moving forward with this.
And I will say too, if back when we set our goals at our July meeting as a as a board, if we had known this was such a tight timeline on this issue and that this and that this was possible, I think we would have had this as a goal set. It's not that it's not, it wasn't a goal. We just didn't realize that this timeline was possible and that this grant was possible. So thank you, Tanya, for your work on it and for pushing us on this because it's clearly something the town is concerned about. I mean, look at just the increase in storms we're having and our fear of losing power all the time. I mean, it it it's not going to ever be more timely as it is now.
I I totally agree. I I'll say MAPS C has already indicated that they have capability to help us with the technical aspects of a federal grant. Um, so there are resources at MAPS C that might be able to assist us on that. And I agree with you, you know, what what kills me is hearing the stories about somebody who depends on oxygen and every time a storm is coming, he starts to get anxious because he's worried the power's going to go out and he's not going to be able to breathe. Like, it it is the most vulnerable of our town that we're trying to protect. Um, you know, we all know, a lot of people in town, actually, we know how many, two hundred and seventy-one houses. So almost ten percent of our housing stock has backup generation. And itself has thirteen backup generators. So, you know, we we take for granted, of course, you have to have backup generation. That's not normal. Of course, you should afraid the lights are going to go out when a storm comes. That's not normal, as I see from the numbers. So we we have a good story, a a clear need. It is the most vulnerable, um, of our people and some of the sites, uh, definitely focus on making sure that those, um, in our town who don't have the backup power generation and will go cold, will be able to stay warm.
Yeah, Jean, you've been patient with your hand up.
Um, well, thank you, Tanya, for the presentation and I appreciate, I appreciate you providing more color too on National Grid and the financing, which I know I asked about last time. So thank you for that. I also appreciate that there's question marks, given that you haven't studied it yet. Um, you did answer my question about whether there was funds right now we could tap into to help you do this process. Given the strain on other staff out there. Um, just a few observations and some of it may not even be accurate, given, uh, I'm just going to sort of convey my ignorance of exactly how this all works. But, um, it struck me when we were looking at, I believe it was phase two, the list of public and private. I understood why a lot of the public properties were on there. I do think to the it it struck me that a lot were centered around the center of town and the harbor area. And I know that Beechwood is really susceptible to outages. I'm not sure if those micro grids grids can access Beechwood in the three A area. But I do think that if, for example, we're looking at private and really helping facilitate private getting a public resource. The Beechwood and sort of the farther flung areas of town are also going to be important for us to consider because I think that's a chronic pain point for them. Um, you know, maybe somewhere a around Shaw's or something like that and Stop and Shop and, um, Avalon. And.
Right.
Successor, whatever it's called now.
Totally agree. And the reality is, and that's why phase four, a townwide mini grid, I'd love to do that. Because we are such a small system, we're seventeen point five megawatts peak. Maybe seventeen megawatts peak in the summer and ten megawatts in the winter, which is when we, you know, we care about power year round. But it becomes in the winter in New England. So, um. That that's why we'd love to do phase four, based on the conversation with National Grid this morning. I I just, I don't think they can get their arms around it. It it is, it's so, nobody's done it, right? So it's really denovo. The technology exists. Had to do. There's some technical issues, but those are solvable. It it's just, it's it's a big.
If we had our own municipal utility, if we broke free from National Grid, like Hangham and Aquarian, would that be a possibility?
Yeah, so, um, we have been asked by you, and we have mentioned this to National Grid. We have, we have been, um, asked by you to look at what it would take to become our own municipal light company.
Mm hmm.
And and obviously, if we, it'd be like the streetlights. If we owned the distribution system, we could do whatever we wanted, subject to costs and, um, grants and appetite for rates and all of that. You you know, the the two hundred and seventy-one homes that have implemented backup generation, I I estimate that's five million dollars. Five million dollars that our residents have spent at least. So, you know, is there just a more economic way to do this? I think the answer is yes. Um, I think it, it's going to be a long fight. And we did have at our Alternative Energy Committee meeting. Uh, we had somebody come talk to us who had done the municipalization. They said it was ten years, ten years. Or it was a drawn out process. No utility wants to lose a town. And actually, not a publicly traded utility. It just, their stock price would fall because of the the threat. So it it would be a very, it'd be David and Goliath. We would be, it'd be hard. It'd be hard. I'd rather, there's money laying on the ground. There's money that we can get. I'd rather have National Grid be our friend and work with us to solve these problems. Like I said, they're already, their eyes are open in some ways to our problems, I think, in the last six years. I hope Chris agrees. We have, it seems like we've gotten more attention, um, from National Grid than we were originally. So I think this, going through this process is helpful, but we are, as an alternative energy committee, tasked with looking at municipalization. We are looking at that. And and if we did buy this crappy distribution system, we just might design it differently. Once we'd have to invest, but it would be an expensive undertaking, both to buy, which has to be at replacement power costs and to update it.
That's a really good point.
I'd rather go after the grants. And again.
Because I think a lot of residents in coacet look at what Hangham has, right, with their own utility company. And they're, and we're jealous for for good reason. And a lot of our residents can't afford generators or can't afford to power a generator for that long. So I do see the frustration because I do believe that those of us who are paying attention and come to these meetings know that progress is being made. But it's really frustrating, I think, for average class citizens who aren't listening to this meeting to know what's happening. And it just, every time the power goes out, the frustration mounts and I don't blame them. So I think it's valid, but I think you're being very strategic and pragmatic here with saying that obviously we can't just easily become our own utility and go that route. And this is another route to go that could really be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, and look, at the end of the day, if we are able to get this updated system. Uh, then, you know, if we get to the point where we have to buy it, at least we're buying something that's valuable, not updated system. Again, I don't see any, this is a bad proposition and National Grid has been great. Lots of phone calls, lots of conversations. We had seven people from National Grid on the call this morning, talking about where do you want to go with this? This is an opportunity for both of us. And they agree. It's just they're very big utility.
Yeah.
Strategically, they want to do it. It just comes down to the implementation.
Corey.
I was just going to mention, um, you know, Jean, I think you probably find it interesting coming from the, from the legal side of it. If you dive into kind of the, the laws, the regulations of how we got here, um, I think you'll be a little bit astounded at how much the deck, the deck is stacked against us in this regard. Um, you know, what, what, um, one of the things that Tony mentioned is that replacement costs. I mean, we're buying the entire system as if it was brand new. It would be equivalent to trying to rebuild the entire thing from scratch. And we'd have to do that after we buy the existing system. Um, never mind, you know, um, just getting through that process. I mean, we have to cover tens and millions of dollars or for more. Um, never mind the, you know, added staff and, you know, then we have to get into, um, you know, uh, uh, bidding on our own wholesale rates, that kind of stuff. But also you'd also be disconnecting a lot of residents from state level programs. Um, when it comes to, you know, energy efficiency, you know, audits and stuff like that, those are all, you know, available to National Grid ever source customers. But they're not necessarily available to municipal, um, customers. So it it really, it it's amazing how, when you get down to the bottom of how, as I said, how how much the deck is stacked against us. Um, on the the committee side, I'd like Diane's, uh, and Chris's suggestion about just putting this under the town manager. Uh, that just seems to be a really good way to to, um, get this done, um, especially have, you know, have it under the right umbrella. So I do like the idea of just charging the town manager with creating. So, I do like the idea of just charging the town manager with creating this, um, you know, working group or ad hoc committee. I think it gives it the the motion it needs. So, that's where I sit on that.
Okay, thank you, Corey. Jean.
It it, yeah, and to be frank, I I asked you a question that I in part knew the answer to in terms of National Grid, but I was just curious to see how it would spin out. Including frankly, that I think we need to have some leverage about how far we're willing to go if things do not continue. To get. The to um improve, but um just two points that I wanted to make on in terms of the town manager. And and that whole process and the timeline. I know you know this, but I'm going to put it out there because I saw the timeline. The town meeting is actually December thirteenth, and if we need to have matching. It looks like you have a proposal to submit the grant before the town meeting, and I'm not sure if we'll need, to the extent there's matching funds. And warrant article on that, and I know that um. Chris has proposed a warrant schedule. Um, that may be of interest as we go through this process. We we may have to be flexible, given how fast things are moving, but. An eye on that, that. Those moving pieces.
He's going to bring up the warrant schedule too. It's on our agenda for tonight too, Jean, but you're right, that we have to kind of do a dance here with the timeline heading into town meeting.
And I think, you know, look, the state, the the agencies of the state that we've talked to are very excited about us and this microgrid. And what we're trying to do, it it feeds into what the state's trying to do, the Commonwealth is trying to do. So, there's a lot of excitement behind it and funding that they've said they can contribute to the twenty five percent share. So. I I think. You know, I don't know how strict these deadlines are. It's been amazing that. Out, but, you know, we most certainly have the relationship to talk to them and say, look, we we'd like to, before we. Get the affirmative to go forward, we need to take this to the town meeting and. Just, just, just on that, and I actually don't know the answer, but I mean, we may, we may need to identify that we're coming up with. A certain amount of money, but we may not have to have the money actually committed before we submit the grant. Which might make more sense in terms of town meeting to not go to them with a maybe if. So, if, if, if I'm willing to make just a motion that would um direct the town manager to work with. Tanya on behalf of the Alternative Energy Committee to put together kind of an ad hoc um working group to. Bring this application um to conclusion at the end of January and take whatever steps are necessary. In terms of reaching out to us for support.
Yeah, I'm absolutely fine with moving ahead with that too, if Corey and Jean, I feel like you are as well.
So, so I I move whatever I just said, and I I do also want to flag that I think it's important to be, to include the town hall. Building Committee or some representative thereof, because they're fast tracking, obviously, um, a project that could.
Right.
Be a big piece of this.
Second, we have a second and any discussion, any further discussion. We've been discussing it a lot. All right, roll call vote.
Ray Evans, hi.
She nearly dibbled on.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. Woo, okay, that was an exciting vote. Thank you, Tanya, and the Alternative Energy Committee for all the hard work that has been done with that, and we will keep everyone updated as things start progressing. Very exciting. All right. Our next agenda item, we will be postponing based on the executive session we had earlier, so we will not be doing. The next item on the agenda for a vote that will be postponed to a further date. The item after that is our FY twenty two goals update, which is actually a great transition. From what we just talked about, Chris, I know we just gave you a lot more work. But I I'm also very excited about the progress being made on the other goals the board set, and I know you have a good update for us.
Okay, um, thanks, Carrie. So, um, I'm going to show it, just walk you through a quick PowerPoint and some some points. But what I will say is that we 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 kind of have to. Work this in a little, um, so either this becomes part of.
Yep.
Goal four, uh, and again, I think it's probably fair to make it that because it's at that level. Um, so with with that, and and with that in mind, I'll I'll start with. Through, so, but I want to thank uh Justine for all of the. For the very nice graphics.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, that's amazing.
She didn't create that, she found it, but I I will. Yeah, I I, you know, I'm not sure. She she found, I I what, it's fair use. What I know is that it's. We 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 claim no copyright on this thing. Um, so, uh, this is uh, the FY twenty two goal. So, what's your goal number one? But uh, this is just to refresh, right? Transit communication structure incorporates inbound, outbound, internal, external, it's the whole nine yards, right? So, we started talking internally, uh, and I've and and with other, well, folks too. So, let me walk you, uh, uh, let me walk you through. The start of this, because this is that, this is going to be something that I want to be checking back with you regularly. So, this is going to be a theme. We're starting, we're, I'm giving you like the first steps down the path, and then we're going to be checking back soon thereafter. Um, so. Uh, here's a few first steps. The first, one of the first things we were doing, and again, I have a staff working group that's formed that we've we've started to meet. Um, we got inventory, all our communication tools, both internally and externally, because we can't, you know, we don't really have a comprehensive list. We kind of know we have a Facebook page. Uh, you know, we have the town as one, CPD, the police have one, and we have Twitter for emergency management. That said, there's a lot of things that happen independently and probably shouldn't, but they do. We need to get those all under one. We need to just get our arms. What are we doing? How are we communicating? And by the way, that includes, how many email lists do we have? I know we have multiples. We were talking about this the other day. Police have, treasure collectors have, uh, the library has one. So, you know, we have these different lists. What do we do? How do we manage them and and? And, um, you know, we also do regular mail. So, one of the things, you know, what's old is new again. Um, there's not a lot of mail going out. Now, since we're, we don't have to worry about the post office screwing up the mail going from here across country, it's just local. So, we could do mailings in town, um, you know, comparatively and extensively, reach a lot of people, and it's something that's a tool. So, those are all things that we're in the process of compiling. We're also analyzing data, so all off of the website and all our social media pages have data that's part of it, and. Um, we're now walking, working through getting that data. How many people are going? What page they're looking? How people, how are people spending? The the data that we have available, and that's definitely on Facebook pages, definitely in the in the websites. So, that's all being pulled together. Some of that already has been pulled together and some of it's. Has not. Um, one of the things that that came up is how do we reach people uh to get input? Um, and one of uh, one of the things we're looking at is assessing options. Now, if you remember. Those of you who are on the board a couple of years ago, we were talking about a company that does this kind of electronic pollings that are dedicated by community, and they they get scientifically valid. Uh, surveys going out because they have people who sign up, and then they give you demographic backgrounds. Uh, the community doesn't know who specifically responded, but they, because people have validated themselves into the system, kind of like. What a bigger polling company could do, that they could tell you that, you know, the people, you know, young families doing this or. Uh, most, most residents use the internet, connect with you this way, or this is what, uh, what, these are the the kinds of things that people are using for social media access. Um, this, this, the, there's Survey Monkey, you can do a tighter version of Survey Monkey, but these are companies that do this. Uh, and we're looking at a few of, um, this kind of stop pre pandemic, we're picking up. So, there's definitely options out there that exist and and that people would do it for a living. And other communities have have made use of that. And by the way, you can ask questions as simply as how do you access your social media, but. What do you think about uh the proposed land use effects, right? And communities of Sudbury is an example. They had a piece of land they acquired, and they polled the communities to what, and they gave options, and they got feedback as part of a community process for engagement. So, you can use a tool like that to gauge public input in a lot of areas. Um, we're also um looking at what other communities are doing. Uh, as I may have mentioned, I found a study that Lexington. And, uh, you know, they're kind of a gold standard for, they have, they have a very strong financial base, they have a very strong engaged community. And, uh, in fact, they're they're town managers, the president of the International Civic Assembly Association, and um, they, so they're very engaged in all good government stuff. They did a study a few years ago, which which I looked at, and they found a lot of communities don't have communication strategies. Um, they should, but they don't, and uh, and they have a lot of very interesting information. So, I don't want to have to reinvent the wheel. I want to find some of these best practices that are out there and and just have them in our, as our starting point for our data. Another thing that we're doing right now is we're looking at the primary town website. There's a lot of work to be done on that. Um, there's already a staff working group underway. There's a lot of assessment going on. Um, and we're looking at the the refresh options. The contract has a fresh option in it that we're we're uh triggering. Um, that said, we still have questions to ask and and input to gather. We could get input from ourselves, which fairly easily. The question is how to get input from the community? How do you find out? How do you ask the questions you haven't asked? How do you get the input that you haven't? Got, uh, and that's, we're not terribly good at asking questions like that all the time. Most municipalities are, so it's something we have to. Figure out, going back to the polling survey question I just. Uh, another, we have a tool, right? This last year, we upgraded our communications, we brought on a communications firm that's been very helpful with some very big events. They actually did the situ. Uh, situated lighthouse, uh, I'm sorry, situated coast guard station, they did save the boat, save the train last year. And they've done COVID communications and some other things for us, press releases, it's been very effective, but they do more. So, I'm I'm going to have a communication, a conversation with them about. Things that they might be able to do for us. Um, now, as I say this. Uh, what I want to do is come back with all this information for miles in about six, six, uh, six, seven weeks. And and lay this out and say, okay, here's what we've done, here's the things you're looking at, here are some next steps. And I, I'm looking, obviously, to all of all of you to give input on this too. Uh, and, you know, there are some, I think, some fairly low hanging fruit. We we need to start a town Instagram. I mean, I I I'm I'm expecting that's going to come out at this very first stage, because that's a tool that we're not really using, that is very, what is very much used by community residents. That said, the it's, the the answer to this isn't just a knee jerk, create or go on Facebook or go on this. It's. Taking a step back, looking at all the tools and finding ways to. To harmonize them and to some extent, which we've done some of during COVID, we were making sure we're getting one message out all across a lot of platforms, and I think. We need to do a better job of doing that and helping people navigate the information that's there. Uh, one of the things the Lexington study found is that. Um, Google did a better job of finding excellent information than Alexa to website. So, you could ask questions on Lexi's website, you got better answers if you just Google. Uh, it's because the dead, the 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 search engine that was built into the website wasn't really that good, and it's. Um, it's something that. Um, there's, there's ways to approach that. And we, again, none of us internally here are. Um, a guru's stuff, so we we need to find those resources and put them to use so we can get better at this. So, we want to study, we're going to have a summary of our our tools, both internal and external, because that was the goal, uh, because we do communicate not only with our staff in multiple ways. Um, but also with our boards and committees, we have to figure out a better way of doing that, make sure people are connected, right? Uh, we want to get, again, all that data, uh, and look at options for surveys. How do we, how do we get better input and engagement with residents on a. Electronic or social media basis. Um, and by the way, service can also be done by paper, I understand that by as much, those are a lot expensive. Uh, we got, I want to look what other communities have done, have very started doing that, it's the best practices, target, look at our communications contractor for some updates and thoughts, and then. You know, get an update on where we are on assessing the primary website. There's a lot more work to be done. Uh, so, I said, everyone's very engaged. I think as people are genuinely excited about this, and I think there's a lot of, uh, a lot of great work to come. This, uh, but again, on a fairly tight time table, this is not coming back to in six months. We want to, we want to, we want to have some really concrete. Steps to be taken this fall and leading into the spring. So, uh, that's a, that's a first look at where we're going on the communications portion. The second uh goal you you get set as a group was this first piece, it was. Work with the zoning bylaw working group, master plan implementation committee, finalize and present testimony, a comprehensive zoning bylaw revision. And we stepped back for a second, it's a big audacious goal, right? Um, the the other, and and we said, well, you know, there's a couple of other major things that are going on. We talked to master plan. Getting good, and talked to a few other folks, and a recommendation was made that it's in front of you here and um. Uh, and again, I haven't circled this paraplegic circle at the stall as well. Is to add two other pieces to this goal. One is. Beginning scope of village revitalization project, which kind of fits right into the theme. And also supporting the harbor, really, obviously, a very big thing. We're doing a lot of work. In fact, we're, we're about to be awarded a grant. Um, on Thursday, I could send you links, uh, I will send you links to the virtual platform. Uh, where the Secret Economic Council will be announcing grants. I don't have the exact number yet, I was just, they're holding that close to their chest, but they'll be announcing those things. On Thursday. I don't know if anyone wants to go to Buzzards Bay, uh, at Mass Maritime, they'll be doing an official presentation there. I think we're going to probably do it virtually. As much as a child would keep fun. So, uh, it's something I'd like you to, to, just to think about. You may say, no, uh, you got to work on those things anyway, but we really. Just want to stay on zoning, and I see Jean's hand if if you want to. I'm happy to answer questions now, but I'm going to jump on the board, so.
Yeah, no, go ahead, Jean.
Yeah, and I know, Chris, you and I have discussed this in the past, but um, at least it was my intent, and maybe it wasn't. The other select board members, which is why I wanted to bring it up, that when we said comprehensive zoning bylaw revision, that included, for example, the harbor. Village, residential, affordable housing, et cetera. And so, I think it's already built in, and this doesn't need to be revised. If there is something different that people are thinking and proposing this alternative, I. I I'd like to hear that because I think it's already there and we don't need the alternative.
Well, I see Corey and Diane's hand too.
I'm on the other side as I look at it.
Diane was first, yeah.
Um, go ahead, Diane.
Um, I I appreciate that because I think the same way you do, Jean, but I I think this is probably more. Of an acknowledgement that these components, because the zoning bylaw working group, that isn't part of their charge currently, is to. Incorporate a village revitalization program, which could impact zoning, you know, or could be part of zoning, but it could also be other things. And and I think the harbor is, has always been kind of tangential to all the other planning. Initiatives, so I have no problem adding it. Um, if nothing else, it clarifies things. Yeah, welcome.
Your cat agrees with all.
Clarabelle agrees. I got the dig into the leg. Um, anyway, I I have no problem adding that language because I do think it clarifies it. Even though one might assume it's part of that already.
All right, I, point well taken. Corey.
Need to get a similar cat, that way the cat. Screen. Um, no, but I'm I'm, I think, you know, Gina, I'm definitely on the same page as you, you know, I think when we, my intention was to. Um, really comprehensive was the, was the right word. Um, but as we're going through this, I think there are certain areas of focus. That are worth highlighting, um, where, you know, we we. I I think that's more because the lift in certain areas is greater than other areas. So, if anything, you know, the lift around the harbor is is huge, the lift around. Um, you know, downtown is is pretty big on its own, so that would, I think, allow Chris to say, okay, we're going to bring in a resource for. Just this section of something, um, instead of just bringing resources to do the the top down everything. So, I can, I can see the reasoning for. Because we're not excluding, we're only highlighting, right, Chris? I mean, that's kind of what we're we're doing here. So, I can certainly see the additions of the highlighting. Being helpful, but I'm open to the idea that if if you think there, it's detracting from something, maybe we we workshop a little bit more.
I mean, I do think that highlighting is a little bit excluding. I I know what you mean, right? It's it's shifting our focus a little bit, so I do want to be careful that we're not. Completely ignoring other areas, but I I mean, I think it's a fine line, and I I see what you're all saying.
Because I think residential and large home review, I think we're next up on the zoning bylaw working group list, and that is the 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 sort of. Elephant in the room, the big, you know, massive pain point for many residents, a lot of different views up and down. Um, and so, I think if we're gonna, you know. That, once you start this process of highlighting.
It's a slippery slope of highlight. I know, and I mean, we're not, and we're joking, but it's true, right? Like, if we are highlighting areas, I. Some other area, you're not going to get attention, and I mean, that's fine. I think that is what we're all agreeing to, but we we just have to be careful with it.
Yeah, it's not so much, it's not, it's not, it's not this to the exclusion of that, it's if, no. And I, and again, if I share them as couple of slides, I think you'll understand where I was going with this. I mean, the the harbor is already there, right? The thing is, uh, it's, you know, if if you say, uh, the comprehensive zoning study gets, you know, any, the the attention. These other things, you know, at the end of the day, when there's a finite amount of resources, they, you know, that that these other things will not get as much.
Totally.
Um, that that, that said, um, and again, this this wasn't, this wasn't me, this came out of the master plan folks too. I asked for their input. Uh, just to make sure that we weren't leaving anything on the table. Um, that said, I, this is just for conversation, which is, you're having a great.
Okay, honestly, the reason that I like the zoning, comprehensive zoning reform is it's very specific and. and not discrete, but it involves the same skill sets, the same, you know, you hire the lawyer to review all of the reforms. It, it's a huge project. And my only concern is village revitalization, I think, goes beyond zoning by law reform. I think there's a lot of facets.
Oh, completely.
A harbor, there's a lot of facets to that. And, and so I, I'm a little worried about, you know, starting to mix stuff up in terms of moving away from just, you know, rewriting the statute. And now we're sort of morphing into different areas that I just, that's, that's my only concern. That, yeah, like we want them to prioritize zoning reform.
Well, so, so Jean, here's, I mean, here's, here's the, the concrete kind of thing that I think is in my head is that, you know, right now, we're trying to wrap up the economic development task force. And one of the asks we're gonna have is, hey, we need a resource to do this. And, you know, the question we have is it, is it better underneath a goal or is it, is it worthwhile enough to exist on its own? I mean, we have very short term needs downtown. You know, there's a huge amount of money coming to downtown right now with a lot of new projects. And we're also gonna wrap it up Elm Street Quarter. There's a lot of stuff with infrastructure. So from, from our point of view, it was okay if we, if, if this is part of the larger zoning goal, then it all flows pretty well. If you don't think that's necessary, then, you know, that, and if you think that's a priority that can exist on its own outside of the goal, then certainly, but we just, I think from my perspective, it just, it, it fit nicely in that slot because I was trying to find a place, I guess, to put it really outside of it just being a random, you know, out of nowhere thing. That's kind of the
Never react, but I know. My, my only, I, I just, I think it's simpler and easier to keep disciplined and focused on zoning by law reform because it is but I don't think that means that you can't, like, we can't have a discussion about the other economic development grants or request. I mean, it seems like every, every meeting, we have something new appear. And so I think that not having it a goal doesn't exclude it from consideration.
Goal number five is that the catch patient for, you know, village revitalization in the harbor. And I mean, the, the other piece of that is then who owns it? Like if we throw it into this goal, which is owned by zoning, you know, the mass plan implementation committee. We have a harbor committee and we have harbor working groups and, you know, so maybe we need to think about how to structure that, but
We need a goal.
I agree. It's a priority. Certainly the harbor's a huge priority and taking the working group economic development stuff to the next level is also, has to get done.
And again, this is always the problem is that we have way more goals than we have time for. And this is a really good discussion because we don't want to be so overwhelmed with these goals that we can't get anything done for any of them. So I'd like to talk about it.
The, the reason, by the way, I understand all the points, man. And it is, in many ways, the, the comprehensive zoning issue is really standalone. These are, these other two are planning. They're not zoning particularly. It's true. But I am gonna need feedback from all of you if those are gonna be at this level because at the end, you know, we, we can't, you know, I can't, I can't, I can't pack 72 hours into a 24 hour day, right? It's not, it's not possible. So nothing, nothing's not gonna happen. But let me walk through these. So, so, let me go back to scratch here. That was a really good conversation. So, all right, so this is pretty pictured to have that too. So this, these are, these are things that I think you should consider for this. Number one, you have the zoning by law work. This, right? You should say, this is your goal, folks, lead on this. And obviously the planning boards involved, and also some public stations, this is just for conversation. There's going to need to be some kind of draft scope of study. What are they looking at? Are they gonna look at every single thing in the zoning code or are there targets? And I know the zoning working group has already looked through some of this, but I think you need to help all clarify what it is that you want to do. Because we're gonna do an RFP, we need to know what we're asking. Right? And again, that, that's gonna go right in with this. And then we need to fund it. And we've already put in for $75,000 state grant, optimistic about, but we won't know about probably this October. And we would probably ask for a match at special time meeting from available free cash to have, I think 150 is a fair number. It could go more than that, but that's at least a fair number to get this, this next phase moving. You know, if a draft scope is developed with the zoning by law working in the fall and RFP is get, get ready and over to release, once we know about the grant. You can complete the funding in December and you can really go in deep. You could have someone on board. So once the new year starts, boom, you're in, right? So the fall is really a critical time to, to scope this thing out. And so that's comprehensive zone. So this is, you know, the planning, you know, planning staff will be living this and, you know, council will be assisting. And should it go deep dive, you're gonna wanna, you know, retain whether it's KP or someone else to be doing that. And also planning consultants, whether it's PC or some other organization. And you want to build a time for the conversations too. So, you know, you, you don't want to, at the large term review, everybody loves. I'm not saying they do, right? But it turns out that, you know, the zoning here is important. You know, I want to make sure you're covering whatever it is, that it's on people's, the pulse. Though the other two areas to touch on, because we're talking about them. So one of the things that brings the village revitalization up so much is it's mentioned so many times in the map. These are just examples. And again, I'm not gonna read what they say. But attract, you know, these are goals. Attract and retain diverse businesses. Create a variety of economic activities. Improve village connectivity. Support collaborative workspaces. Those are all in the master for the village. And then creating a culture. It's a very definable thing. We've been talking about for a while. I think it's probably time to bring it back. When I was situated for the Coast Guard press conference, I saw the clients, welcome to the down, the situat cultural. When you went down into situ and I know there's to talk about doing something like that here. So those are just samples of things that are in the village that are in the pre-existing plans. And, and again, a point we'll take, this is not the zoning working groups plan. This does look right down street. So, you know, if this is gonna be something that's gonna be a focus of the next 12 months, you really want to expand the Elstree working group to include this or create a new working group. Economic development working group rolls right into this and obviously the planning department. And you need some money. I mean, this is gonna be a separate kind of look at what's going on. And the Russian real development pressures to the village. I mean, you know, the hot economy is affecting every, it's not just homes under some road. I did, there's some great properties in the village that have been looked at. And it's, it's something, and, and again, I hate to call it revitalization because the village, village is really very vital. It's really, it's, it's kind of like, you know, next phase revitalization because it's, it's just the natural change of things, right? Because it's really is a pretty vibrant place. There are some empty storefronts that did not exist before the pandemic. And then just on the harbor really quickly, and again, another picture of the harbor. And I apologize, some of this is a little small to one slide. For the, Tim is, Tim Davis is a very strong advocate. I can't have 15 things on a slide that we can prioritize all at once. So I have what I consider to be kind of top four. The village connections already underway. Elm Streets are already working on this. There's planning work underway. Construction grants pending, the whole class of harbor in development is, is, is moving. So there's a ton of work already happening in that area. And that's a big part of the harbor. Parker, every year boat ramp, as I said, there'll be an announcement of a grant on Thursday, which will move us, I hope, a lot further down the down the pier to build that, to finish that work. We have the government island pier itself, and we actually have an engineering grant in place now in preparation for getting a design study that we can actually ask for money in the spring. So we go to annual 10 minutes for money. And then the, the, you know, the perpetual question about judging, that isn't so much money right now as getting into the army course wheelhouse, making sure they're on their lists. And I've already had a conversation with Tim and others about getting in there. So, you know, the Elm Street working group is one of these resources to chip to class of harbor. Infrastructure, planning, planning group, I think it's called, the Harbor Master Planning Board, of course procurement, this, Michelle's involved in so many things too. So there's lots of moving pieces on the harbor play. So I'll shift for a second. So a public facilities planning, again, big, big conversation. And the first word of this is key, right? It says initiate, doesn't say complete. And so much like communications, we had some conversations. This is where we are. So we started compiling a list of all town abilities. And these things exist, you know, this data is already there, we're just putting it to one place. Including those least other organizations, something we started this year. We actually brought in a firm. We had some money and we assessed this. The CSCR headquarters that it's town owned. We looked at the Legion building. We looked at the Light Keepers building. Because none of those organizations are designed more like keepers technically, but nothing really designed to do maintenance, right? That's not what they do. So those are all major assets. So we took a look at all of them and got some baseline data on all of them. So we need to compile all of that. And what are they used for? Are there planning or assess, are there planning processes or assessments in progress? Have they already been completed? What's down the road? What's, what's there? Also, a pile list of town on major infrastructure. That's, when I say utilities for us, that's water, sewer, roads. So I broke it into five areas, utilities, which is, again, for us, pretty much water, sewer, transportation, IT. We have a very robust, and we have a fiber loop. We spent a lot of money on that. There's a lot of connectivity. We have parks and recreation. We have, you know, open space and hills and all of that. And then waterways. And I said waterways because it's seawall. That's pure dock infrastructure. There's a lot of things, putting all on, on one list. And then applying the list of primary funding sources. What's out there? What kind of government programs? So you tap really supporting given a kind of economic councils, one. The, this whole one stop for growth, which is 12 state programs, which we put in for Elm Street and zoning study. So, except, so I gotta compile this information to report, come back to you in the fall, identify additional information that's needed. What are the next steps? What do we need to study more? What do we need to pull together? What do we, you know, have time, you know, do we need help to figure out timelines? And cost test, it's all of those things. And also to start public conversations about, you know, how some of this is gonna work together. Because as people remind, it's very easy to get in the weeds. The fact is that it's the same pockets that pay for all the stuff, right? You're paying a water bill, you're paying a service bill, you're paying a tax bill. It's all coming out of the same, same funding source if you're a homeowner in Cohasset. So you, you gotta look at how all this, those things fit together and how they work. So, that said, this is a, a big study. And some of the folks that are involved in this particular one would also be involved in this whole brick. Brianna's doing a lot of work on harbor, but Michelle is, is kind of taking point on pulling a lot of materials together. So again, Michelle also has to do our regular procurement. So there's only so many hours per time that some other staff. So that is a look at where we are. And you've already changed the goal list tonight. You already just added it up. So I, and again, I,
Yeah.
And then, again, I'm, I'm gonna need some guidance as to how you want to handle, you know, harbor and, and the village. Village, you may say, look, that's awesome, but we're gonna do that in the second. We're gonna do that in 2022.
Yeah.
And if that's the case, that's fine. If it's not the case, I need to know. Because again, one of the things we're preparing is potential funding from ARPA and from town meeting, you know, that they can be tranches for economic development, resiliency, those kinds of things. Can we use any of that money now? So the, I need to get some, some general idea of where you're gonna, where you want the staff collectively to go on some of these things. Obviously, the big zoning, obviously, that's already, that's a top line thing, the comprehensive zoning study. And you just have to also give some direction to the zoning working group, I think, about how you want to handle that. And, and how we want to staff, staff and support these, these, these scope.
This was a really helpful synopsis tonight, Chris. And again, in the wake of the decision we just made with Tanya and alternative energy, I'm kind of rethinking how to prioritize these things. Diane, your hand, your hand was up first, then Jean.
I just wanted to say that that was a really great presentation and the slides were beautiful. So good job on those. It's a beautiful town to show off in pictures. Sorry, lost my train of thought. That wasn't the media's thing. I, I do think that I don't want to lose track. Harbor to me is one of the most important priorities all the time because of the opportunities. Because you have to do things to it. So it doesn't, the infrastructure doesn't fall apart. You have to dredge it every X number of years. So like, it's always there and there's always, there are opportunities for funding that we have to constantly be on top of. Similarly, I think when they do the zoning, there are implications for economic vitality in the village. And I also think that because we have ARPA funding, we can't push these off. I, I think they have to, they have to infuse all of, all of what we're doing. So I think we need to find a way to keep them all on the priority list and figure out what we need in terms of staffing or rejiggering committee structures and/or charges or, or whatever. I mean, you put them on the slides, Chris. So I need, so so clearly there's a belief from your team that these are things we have to stay on top of as priorities.
And also, I kind of related to that, Diane, like, it does seem like we definitely need some, somehow, some way more support staff or people to help. And I'm trying to figure out how we navigate that with certain goals, right? So with the first communication goal, it would be great if we had, you know, an added staffer to help with kind of these creative social media aspects that understand platforms like Instagram, right? Like that skill in itself, we, I think we need some help with. So it's also figuring out what possible skills or staffers do we need for these goals? And how can we maybe work together on those? It's, it's just a big puzzle that we need to figure out how to put the pieces together. Jean?
So first, thank you, Chris, for the great presentation. This was helpful. Sorry about the train in the background. Just a quick question slash comment maybe on public facilities, which, again, and this is maybe more of a comment for my fellow select board members to make sure that we're on the same page. When I think about big public facility planning, I'm thinking Cohasset's facing multi-generational projects, town hall, schools, potentially sewer updates of some sort. How do we make sure that we are taking this all into account and planning for it, including from a financial standpoint? So Christie, your point doesn't hit the taxpayers' pocket all at once or create an overwhelming burden. And, and so I'm not sure, and a part of this is me trying to like streamline and triage a little bit, that it's like, goes as far as like an inventory of the light keeper's house. Like, people aren't gonna get driven out of Cohasset because of high taxes associated with the light keeper's house. Although we do obviously need to maintain an inventory of our assets and, and keep that up. So I take your point there. But again, so when I was thinking of public facilities plan, I was thinking more about these big ticket projects that I think our residents should be mindful of, know that they're out there, know the timelines, know the financial burdens and consequences and advantages of, you know, all these decisions that we're facing. And I realized that some of this is a little incoherent, a lot incoherent, because the school facilities committee, for example, is just getting going as we speak. So that's more of what I had in mind in terms of like, the really big picture projects. And I don't know, maybe everything is in Cohasset at this point, but.
But you're right. Yeah, no, go ahead, Chris.
Yes, I can explain. So I, I agree, but we'll have the context. On the other hand, there's a lot of things that in town have long been overlooked. And you don't want one day to turn around and have a legion fall down because or the light keepers or, and again, and I can't see SCR is probably even worse shape because that, and then, I mean, the, the, the Legion has a lot of folks who do a lot of great work on that building. So I, I don't want, I mean, so that's probably a bad example. But no, don't get offended. And that's, you, you guys are doing a great job maintaining the building. Also, by the way, we haven't had a lease on that building for 20 years. So we're working on getting that up to date. And the light keepers too, Michelle's looked at that. It was never properly, it's a, it's a wonderful organization. It turns out we're not the right legal structure as to how they, right? What a shot. So we're gonna be doing a lot of work on that. And on those, I agree, they're not the multimillion dollar generation. But you also want to get lost. Because, you know, so it's important that we manage our, our major infrastructure. And I agree with that, like, you know, the, the light keeper, I'm sorry, the, you know, the Harvard office is a tiny little place, right? I want to make sure, and that can fit into the capital plan. It may very well be that a lot of these things fit into the more traditional regular capital plan and build them in.
Yeah, that's sort of where I thought maybe they belong instead of one, you know, one thing our capital plan is obviously struggling with is not just the, like, I think we've done a good job taking stock of our assets and it looks like there's a few more to be added. But it's, you know, how do you, you know, wedge in a town hall, a police station, a school in a capital plant? Like, these are, these are the questions that are out there. And so, again, those were, or, or regional sewer or the brick. The, you know, the, the Muni grid project. And so I was, you know, thinking sort of along those lines.
And also, this is the time to be talking about infrastructure, right? We've talked about possible ARPA funding, but the infrastructure bill that's, that just passed could be huge for us too. We don't exactly know what, all the details of it yet, but thinking about that in terms of timing too, I think is really important.
It very well may be that some of these things merge together, like the heart, obviously make just fit right as the whole waterfront package, right? And again, I, I think the exercise office might just fit right as the whole waterfront package, right? Um, and again, I, I think the exercise for this is important so that we understand the baseline. And again, just so you, we were already thinking that, you know, we're talking about a million dollar plus projects or more than that, right? That have, you know, a twenty five year useful life. Like, so, you know, we're not talking about, you know, a plow. We're not talking about a police car, right? Um, we're talking about the public safety, but we're again, schools or, um. So, uh, that said, I, I, it's, it's important. Uh, with, with facilities also taking much, and facilities at the table on all those too. So we're having some conversations. It's, it's also important that we make sure that we are baking in the regular maintenance of the senior center, all of those other things. Using the capital plan fully as well. Um, so that said, I, I, we're gonna, you know, um, it's a really, I, we're just, um, pull different elements of this together one place. It's just helpful itself. And, and the big, I think the big projects kind of jump out. Uh, you know, the, the salt sheds a half a million dollar project. That was just fun. So that's a fairly big deal. That's actually critical infrastructure, right? If you don't have a salt shower, have salt, we don't keep our roads empty, uh, clear in the winter and, and we don't have buses going to school. So there's a whole, everything kind of interacts and it ties. Um, that's said, that said, when I'm not going to come back to you with a list of a thousand things, it's gonna be, you know, here's this chip package, just so you're all aware. And here's the other bigger package and, and we need to have a conversation.
Corey.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful. I mean, one thing that I'd like to understand, I think, you know, um, the idea of understanding this in a bigger picture is, is also understanding where, where we should be. You know, are we underinvesting, you know, and, and unfortunately, small stuff and big stuff all goes in the same place. Um, and, and thi- this is multi-generational. That's absolutely correct. Uh, and it's also ongoing. Right? It's not like you build a building and then you're done. I mean, now there's increased basement costs, there's other things and we're not, it's not like we build a school and then we'd often build a school for another two hundred years. These are all ongoing. So having an understanding, I mean, we've talked about this with water, with sewer, we would talk about the idea of okay, you know, can we project out, you know, where we really need to be and understand everything, you know, in a holistic manner so that there's not this big, you know, shockwave. We, we, we understand where we should be. And we have a, a sense of whether we're underinvesting or overinvesting or, or what the case is. So I think beginning that process with an understanding of everything is, is kind of where we begin. And then we, you know, it snowballs out from there. Snowball's not the, the right word there, but yeah. It's late, sorry.
No, I, I. No, I, this has been a really great discussion and Chris, your presentation was fantastic. And I almost wonder, you know, do we need a whole separate meeting just to kind of discuss all this stuff again, right? Like is, is this warranting a separate select board meeting to kind of go over these goals again and clarify it? I mean, I just feel like we could have a much longer discussion about this. I'm trying to figure out if we need that as a separate meeting or if we just keep doing updates at our regular meetings. But this is a great discussion. Obviously, it's critical.
I think both, actually. I, I think quicker updates, but I do think that it's gonna be worthwhile to have a bigger public facilities dive at some point with multiple people. I think having, we, you know, we might do more of a communications in a workshop at some point too. Um, and, and by the way, with, with the zoning, you obviously, you're all coming to be at the table talking about, you know, what if that, what does that mean? What are the, you know, what are the priorities? Um, so when you scope out a stud, you need to scope out a study so we can hire the right people to do the analysis. So you get the right tools, right? So, um, this is gonna be, you're gonna have a busy fall.
Yeah.
And I agree that you can't overburden these meetings. I mean, by the way, a lot of great conversation again tonight. Um, uh, that said, you know, many of us have been going fourteen, fifteen hours already today, whether it's all or other things. And, um, um, it, it might be better to only do ten hours and then, you know, do them on another night.
Yeah. Fair point. Corey, then Jean. Jean.
I'd be a fan of having another follow-up meeting shortly on just these topics. I think that, um, will be more fresh and I think it's worth putting the time in upfront to make sure we're moving in the right direction on the same page, including making sure we have the right stakeholders there too, including folks like advisory and capital budget that have a seat at the table when it comes to um, helping advise on the finances to, uh, in public facilities planning, et cetera. So I, I think it's worth fleshing that out to try to make sure that the goals airlift to a good start.
I agree. All right. So we can try to get something on the calendar. Again, I know we could talk about this for hours more, but are there any final thoughts tonight? Obviously, this discussion is to be continued. But thank you for that great presentation, Chris. All right.
I'm gonna move around especially.
Move on, yeah, move on to our speaking.
I, I, this was in the pack and I'm afraid I, in the format I have it and I can't really expand it, so I apologize. Um, so, um, I'm releasing the schedule right now. Here you go. So, um,
Great.
The, the, here's the plan. Um, in two weeks, you'll officially open the warrant. You have to officially open the warrant. And, and that, what that triggers is a seven day, um, opportunity for citizen petitions. That's the way a special time meeting works. People have seven days. Uh, and it would actually technically kick off, I think, uh, on Wednesday morning and you have Wednesday, the following Tuesday, the close of business. Uh, to get a petition. And there's actually a form online and we'll make sure it's all available. If anybody has any questions, I think you can contact uh, my office. Um, the deadline would be the twenty eighth. Uh, we have an internal deadline for the twenty fourth. We've already circulated a form to everyone internally saying, hey, I know placeholders you want for one article for this fall. Um, there'll be a, uh, basically a month of review, um, during the month of October. You have to finalize the warrant by your November second meeting. So we could go to print by the fifteenth because we have holidays. Uh, you know, we have something, we're going into Thanksgiving. I know it seems far away, but we're gonna be on top of that pretty soon. And this needs to be at everybody's home, uh, on November twenty. Uh, so it's two weeks in advance. That's the way the rules work for special time meeting. So we gotta make sure this gets into the post office before Thanksgiving. So it doesn't get caught up in, you know, days. Uh, it shouldn't take, it's usually not a big deal. I think it's, if it gets dropped to the post office, usually out and everybody saw it the next day or the next two days. But it means that, you know, we, we lose that Thursday for sure. So we have to make sure it goes in a little early. The last day registered to vote is the third, it's ten days before the meeting and then the meeting would be the thirteenth. Um, and again, we're still, uh, at this point, we're looking for the high school gym to be that location. And, uh, want to see how things are between now and then.
Okay, Diane.
Just a really quick question. Um, sorry, I'm getting very tired. I'm sorry. Um, Chris, did you talk to KP about providing some kind of, um, you know, open office hours for citizen petitions? That was really helpful and it helped us avoid a lot of kind of unnecessary, not legally correct citizen requests.
Yeah, we're gonna do that. We, we are gonna do that. Uh, i- i- we can't have a, it's maybe hard to have them in person. I, I don't know how we're gonna do that, but we, we will do something. Even if we set up a little open room and people can just come in and visit.
Like a Zoom room awaiting, right? Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, and, and the goal would be to have that, you know, in advance of the twenty first. So people have some, you know, and, you know, I, I maybe I can turn this aside for next week. And I know of at least one or one group that's talking about this and, you know, just reach out. If, if, if you have, know of anybody who has any interest, direct them to the office so I can at least plug them in. Um, uh, so, you know, people, uh, if they're gonna put something together, it's in the right form. And we've been doing this now successfully for the last five, six years and it's been really helpful. Uh, it's helped people streamline proposals. It's also helped people not waste time putting a proposal that how many can act on in front of them. So, um, um, so that's that. That's, that's special time. I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna start and, and go fairly quickly. Um, good.
No, I think that seems great.
Okay.
On that, okay.
Situate Coast Guard Station, uh, very quick update. Uh, if you also the stories, it was really well covered. It was a fashion press conference. There must have been five cameras, multiple reporters, uh, two congressmen, two senators. Every town from Hull represented all the way down to Plymouth. It was a really, really well attended or, uh, presentation. As a side bonus, I got to meet both Congressman Lynch's new regional person. And Senator Warren's for the first time. So we had a nice, I had a nice conversation with both of them. Looking forward to them both visiting Cohasset at some point. And, and, and both like getting, uh, more up to speed on some of our issues and concerns. Uh, so I, I was, from that perspective was a win-win all around. And again, I, I want to thank our, our, our PR folks, uh, who pulled that off. Uh, and, uh, did it, and did as a thank you, uh, for all of us collectively. They did not charge us for the work they did to set that up. So, uh, it was a good, a good event. It was also nice to have members from all the different communities together and it, I know that's great idea, but he, I appreciate him. Want to give him a shout out. He did come down. I thank him for being there and I know he got a chance to be interviewed on A T D. So, uh, you know, I know he talked about sailing and I know he's a sailor and it was, was great to have. Uh, we were there, uh, we didn't speak at the conference, but we were there to, to talk to reporters afterwards. It was great. Um, and that is it. I'm gonna pass on my update, uh, because it's late and.
Chris, hold on, just point about the Coast Guard Station, Chris, real.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We want to make a motion just to begin drafting a letter on that to come from our select board. I, I in Jean, if you want to help with this based on your law knowledge or Chris can draft it, I just want to officially agree to move a little further ahead with this and get a letter drafted. Obviously that we oppose this closing. So if the board is okay, can we make a motion just to begin the process or authorize Chris and whoever helps to start drafting a letter?
Yeah, do, to, to, just to draft or do you want it to just get completed and signed off on?
Uh. So, so what do you think? I mean, obviously I'd want you all to just glance at it, but I, I, I'm fine with either option.
I, i- 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 if, if, it looks like I, I see both Jane and Diane, uh, Jeremy, if you want to work on this, I'm happy to support it in any way and put it on a fancy letterhead. When you're done and send it out. We did get some stats. I have to get them for you. Um, and I think every town is, is kind of, um, that they're mirroring things, uh, that, that said, I think everyone's voice, individual voices are helpful in this too. And I think that Congressman Lynch is, is carrying the unified message to Washington as is Senator Warren and Senator Markey and Congressman Keating. Uh, so I think any unique voice of course will be helpful and I think well received.
So I'm fine with just saying we can draft and submit if everyone else is okay with that, obviously with group input here.
Yep.
Okay.
Who, who was the letter to?
Uh, this will be a comment. And we're going to the comments. This will be a file.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify. We're talking about the final comment. Yeah, I'm happy to help with that if people.
Okay, so. Um, who's, so Jane and Diana, you co.
Absolutely. Whatever you need, but you, you can take the lead on that.
And then, let me, let me just make a motion to that we charge the town manager with, uh, submitting a, a letter on Cohasset's behalf.
Yes.
Uh, during this public, for the regarding this issue. But you can, you can drive this over if you want to.
Can I, Corey, do you mind if I revise that slightly to say that we charged the town manager to file a letter as a comment in the federal rulemaking relating to the Coast Guard Station? I, I think that's what you want, right?
I fully approve of that, that direction. Yes.
Okay, great. We have a second. Any other discussion? Great roll call vote.
Corey Evans eye.
She nearly dimpled.
Diane Kennedy, I happy to help.
Yep, Carrie Thompson, I, oh, thank you. I think this will make a big difference too, if we get that.
I'm gonna ask both you and Diane, both Jane and Diane to help with any.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, go ahead, Chris. You said you, you're, you pretty much gave a long town manager up.
I, I've already given you. So if you want to ask me questions, I mean, I, we're working on Margin Street. So that's, we're still working on uh, we're working on, uh, signs for Main Street. So those are, so those are all in progress. Uh, so, uh, lots of, lots of positive progress still being made on lots of other topics.
Great. Okay. Select board comments. I'll go first quickly. Just want to acknowledge Safe Harbor and everyone who helped put together the vigil. Last Tuesday, it was really powerful and moving and, and a fantastic community show of support and my opinion, and a really important thing that we do every year. So thank you to everyone who helped put that together. And I look forward to seeing more people at our September eleventh remembrance on Saturday. Corey and then Diane, then Jean.
Yeah, I just was gonna talk about September a little bit. I mean, it's been, it's been twenty years. Uh, that's incredible to me. I just
I know.
I was going to school in New York at the time. I remember everything about that, that day very well. It's just, it's remarkable that it's, uh, how long has it been? But it does cause me to say, okay, this is a line in the sand. We've had twenty years of largely reactive to stuff. And it makes me think about what I want the next twenty years to look like. Um, you know, this is a good moment to reflect and say, you know, where have we gone and where do we want to get to? Um, and that's the only thought I have for tonight. Thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you. Diane.
Um, just, just really briefly, I was at a Maya, um, conference, um, and I, I'd love to maybe take uh, ten minutes on our next agenda to just kind of update some of the, the hot topics, including police reform and everything. Um, and, yeah, thank you.
We would love to hear those updates. All right, Jean.
Um, well, I would echo your sentiments, Carrie, about the safe harbor vigil, which was very, um, lovely and touching. I would also say that for all those parents out there, you know, tomorrow is the best day of the year, first day of school. So on a related note, it's the first day of school. So everyone, please be aware of children crossing streets, trying to figure out school buses and stuff. And it's gonna take a little adjustment riding their bikes, um, to school and, you know, uh, so anyway, I just wanted to, um, remark on that.
The most wonderful time of the year.
Exactly. Yes, very exciting. All right. So we have a one set of minutes to approve from the twenty fourth, I believe.
Oh, I'll move the minutes from, uh, August twenty fourth, twenty twenty one.
Second. Okay, roll call vote.
Corey Evans eye.
Jeanne Haley dimpled.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. All right. And we do not have.
Carrie, I have something if you don't mind. Sorry.
Wait, I actually was just gonna bring one thing up that I remembered. Go ahead, Corey. But you go.
So, um, in my motion regarding the, I got confused by the agenda in my head. Um, and so Marion Weatherall, I think with the way I phrased it was appointing her to open space. She's on open space and she needs to be appointed to CPC. So I think I got that flipped over. So I just, I think it'd be appropriate for just to do a clarification motion regarding that appointment.
Sure. I, yeah, no, I thi- I think we had it right on the agenda, but yeah, go ahead, Corey. We can redo that.
I'll just remake the motion, I guess. And, and, okay, I, uh, move to, uh, uh, appoint Marion Weatherall from Open Space and Recreation, uh, as the liaison to CPC.
All right, we have a second. All right, roll call.
Corey Evans eye.
Jeanne Haley dimpled.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. And again, I, we're so close to being done, but the one thing I wanted to bring up, Chris, that I know you sent out is that we are, there is a hearing on our select board name change that Senator Pat O'Connor sent out to us. I am happy to appear at that in person if we want to or to submit something to it, but that is something I believe that's happening next week. So I wanted to address that real quick in terms of what we need to do.
Um, I, Carrie, if you want to testify, uh, in, it's, it's, it's live and it's video live. Um, so, um, if, if, uh, that would be fine. I mean, on behalf of the board, the chair, or if anybody else wants to do that. There's a process, you have the process. You can just sign up.
Right.
Then you're gonna, you're gonna testify. I, um, I'm sure they'll take it. Well, it may, and again, if the board wants to submit, if you want to also submit something in writing, um, that would be fine too. And I, I forget the deadlines shortly. I think it's this week.
Friday. I'll, I'll double check. I, I mean, again, I don't think they're, they're doing a lot of these right now in, in the state house. So I don't think this is going to be any issue. It's mostly procedural, but I'm happy to submit a comment or do it live. I just wanted to the board to know this is happening and see if anyone else is interested in doing anything or if, uh, Chris and I can work on drafting a statement together for all of us to submit. Whatever's easier. It's just happening next week and it, we just got an email about it right before the long weekend started. Any other thoughts or?
I think, I think testifying is exciting, Carrie. I think you should go forward.
All right.
You need to ride up your alley.
Okay. And I'll talk to Chris more about it, but just so everyone's aware that's happening and I'll let you know how it goes. Okay. Jack's not here to do his big motion, but in his honor.
This is, everybody tell them that we never got out of the meeting because no one was there to make a motion. So I'll, I'll move a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second? All right, roll call vote.
Corey Evans, I. Thank you, everybody.
Jeanne Haley dimpled.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. That was a.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.